All right, let's get started. Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 30th, 2023 Winchester Select Board meeting. I'll call it to order. My name is Rich Mucci. I am the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening are Vice Chair Anthea Brady, members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, Michael Benkort, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a busy agenda. I see a lot of people here, so we're just going to jump right into it. And we're going to start with the acceptance of donations.
We accept with gratitude an EEC stabilization grant of $17,966.67 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Childcare License for the month of October. Move that we accept with gratitude an EEC stabilization grant of $17,966.67 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Childcare License for the month of October.
All those in favor?
Move that we accept with gratitude donations in the amount of $480 for the appreciation of services provided and general operations of Council on Aging Programs and Activities.
All those in favor? Great, thank you for those donations. Moving on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. So first up this evening, I have a few appointments. First one is in the Recreation Department. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I have made the following regular full-time permanent appointment in the Recreation Department to the position of Program Coordinator, Christopher Ellison of Woburn, and I respectfully requested the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Is your motion?
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Christopher Ellison to the Recreation Department Program Coordinator position.
All those in favor?
Next up, there's two appointments in the DPW. The first one, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time permanent appointment in the Department of Public Works of Joshua Canada of Woburn to Maintenance Special Equipment Operator, and I requested the Board waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Josh Canada to the Maintenance Special Equipment Operator.
All those in favor?
And the last one, in the DPW, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I have made the following regular full-time permanent appointment of James Tobin of Woburn as a school custodian, and I respectfully requested the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Move that we appoint James Tobin to the school custodian position and waive the 15-day appointment period.
All those in favor? Great, congratulations to everyone. Welcome aboard.
I have a few other things just to update. So we talked about the past few meetings. Our public flu clinics are up and running. The last clinic is scheduled for November 8th at the Junk Center. People can go online to register for those if they're interested. Also, we have our final Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day of the year. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, we've signed an intermunicipal agreement with the communities of Arlington, Bedford, Belmont, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln, Waltham, and Watertown. So our new household hazardous waste collections will be in the Lexington Hazardous Waste Product Collection Facility. And so the next collection day is Saturday, November 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And anybody from Winchester can register online and attend and drop off any of your household hazardous materials. The next will start up again in early 2024 for those monthly events as well. Transfer station fall leaf collection will be starting next month as well, so the transfer station will be open from noon to 4:00 p.m. on Sundays for leaves only on November 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th. Also, just wanted to mention that the Town Clerk's Office is looking for election workers for the 2024 election cycle. It's a very busy election cycle coming up next year. So if folks are interested, there's additional information available on the town's website about how you can volunteer for that. Also, I wanted to give an update on some of our construction projects. EverSource is continuing to work on Cross Street towards the Woburn Line to hopefully get the majority of the construction completed this construction season, this fall, and coming back in the spring for restoration activities. Transfer station renovation is really substantially complete. The final paving and striping was completed last week, so if you were out there over the weekend, things are looking good. There is some final site cleanup and some railings that need to be installed, so there is still some temporary construction fencing out there, but hopefully that work will be complete by the end of the year. I know the big one that everybody's interested in is the Lake Street Bridge construction. That project has been delayed slightly due to the pre-cast of the delivery of our pre-cast culvert sections. They are scheduled, currently they're scheduled for November 13th and 14th. We hope, and our contractor is working hard, to get those delivered on November 9th, which would allow us to reopen the bridge before the Thanksgiving holiday. So we are working, actively working towards that goal. There was, as I've kind of talked about, a few other meetings, some delays in terms of the shop drawing review and state review of our shop drawings to get those units into production in a timely manner, which has delayed the project overall. But we are hoping that we'll be able to get that back on track in the next few weeks and get it open before the Thanksgiving holiday. Town hall fire alarm work is going on. Morocco School Electrical work will be coming back in the spring. We've just awarded the contract for the Woodside Road Winter Pond improvements, and I hope that contractor will either come in this fall or early next spring. We have a contractor scheduled to come in after the November 15th in-water time of year restriction to complete some improvements to the Cross Street Bridge, and then after town meeting, we'll be coming back in the spring to complete the repairs to the Washington Street Bridge. And I think that's all I have for this evening.
Great, thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth?
Just one question on the transfer station. The license plate readers?
Yeah, so we're working on that. We actually had a meeting today. We have another meeting tomorrow.
Okay, I know that's a little complicated, but it was a big part of the kind of lost revenue piece, you know, for it. With that kind of investment, we want to make sure it's there. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Beth. We've reached the point in our meeting where we'll take public comment. If you would like to give public comment, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come to the table, have a seat, state your name and your address, and then you'll be given three minutes, up to three minutes, to give a public comment. So is anyone here for public comment? Who raised your hand first? Come on up.
If you can't hear me, just let me know. I'm also hearing and hearing the mask doesn't do anything to help it. My name is Melissa Bauer, and I'm from 16 Glenwood, which as I know is an item later on in the extended term. I'm here to represent some of my neighbors who can't be here, and also to stand behind neighbors who can be, and to speak on a few different fronts. First is to say that I'm Glenwoodist, and hopefully people know this is a diverse neighborhood with different socioeconomic backgrounds, as well as different ages. And just, our issue with the project that is being bandied about has nothing to do with not wanting to have diversity in our neighborhood. We are a diverse neighborhood. Probably one of the better ones in Winchester for this. We have an issue with having to deal with constantly an unsafe situation with our families and our pets. We have growing families in the neighborhood of all ages. Kids are curious. That's an abandoned property. The idea that this property has just been abandoned is kind of a ridiculous one. We've lived there seven years, and it looked abandoned immediately. So people, you know, have kind of talked about different dates about this property blowing out of grandfather. It's an unbilledable lot. The most recent assessment has come back and has said that it's an unbilledable lot in anything other than speculative. Given that speculative isn't good enough for the kind of timeline that we've had to deal with while we watched this situation unfold in front of us with the type of issue that it's having. We are trying to, we waited long enough, for one thing. Second of all, speculation, we can look backwards and say, in Winchester, based on the tax assessments data base, there are currently 28 properties that have been built and are currently being occupied with single-family homes on lots less than 3,000 square feet. 21 of them were built between 1780 and 1912. Six of them were built between 1940 and 1957. Only one property, which has a sister in the group, the first group, right next door, was built in 2002, and I assume it has something to do with the grandfathered structure because of that. This is likely to change. We in Winchester don't want to build with the kind of density that will mean that people are right on top of each other. 2,800 square feet is a very small lot. And the fact that we only have 28 properties shows that Winchester doesn't like that. We don't want to be Medford. We don't want to be Boston with that type of density. Second thing I wanted to say is that I see a lot of things disparaging my neighbors who sit behind me here, Jessica and Justin, about trying to do some grab-up of land. And the amount that they have to spend on this land to make it even a part of their yard, it's not going to add value to their home that it's going to pave them back directly. It pays back our neighborhood to have them do it. It's not going to increase their taxes that much or add value to their property other than they don't have to live next to an abandoned structure, and we don't have to live next to it either. And that's very compelling to me, because here in Winchester, we take pride in our homes and our neighborhoods, and having to live in this neighborhood where this has been a blight for so long, and then hearing that, oh, well, we're going to push this forward in a speculative manner where we might have to do it for even longer? That seems unacceptable, and it doesn't seem like one any of us would want in our neighborhoods, and we're being asked to live within ours. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else here for public comment? Gia, come on up. Yep, come on, Gia. Justin, sorry. Gia, behind you. He raised his hand first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deav Jerry. I live at 26 Canal Street. I'm also Chair of the Planning Board, and I come here as Chair, but I do not speak for the Board. I want to talk a little bit about 20 Glenwood. And I wrote you folks a memo laying out what I think are two important parts about this decision. One is that the RFP was written in part with the help of the Planning Board, or myself and Town Planner Brian Zickelli. And part of the RFP was that the responses would have been reviewed by the Planning Board and the Affordable Housing Trust in support of the Select Board's decision, and that has not happened. And the way I read the language, I don't see that there is an optional, that our review is optional. But there's water on the bridge. You've already essentially come to some sort of decision as you've entered into purchase and sales. But what I come here to talk about is the best use of the property. And in particular, you have two things you can do, I think, going forward, maybe three. One is you can decide that the response you've got is not in the best interests of the town. The other is that you could, and therefore you could say that you have to send the RFP out again and get some more responses. You could take the property and do a lip on it and put in an affordable house. Or you could accept the responses as you received it. And I think my memo clearly lays out why I think that the offered price for the property is far too low, and that any appraisal of the value of that property has to take into account the fact that it would be added to another lot, which would bring it above the 11,000-square-foot minimum for a duplex in that zoning district, which immediately increases the value of that property dramatically. I sent you data showing how a number of properties were developed in 2014 and 2015. One street over on Hemingway, and each of those properties is valued, the property press structure, over $2 million, $2 million-plus, essentially twice the value of the existing lot at 18 Glenwood. So I think that merely looking at this lot and asking, what can we build upon it, does it disservice to the town? Because what it's saying is the town is actually going to be subsidizing the eventual building of a duplex. And this is, you know, I believe it when the current owners of 18 Glenwood say they do not wish to build or change, but whoever buys that property immediately is going to put a duplex on it. That entire neighborhood is going to go duplex on lots that size. That's been what's been happening over the last 10 years. I don't see that's going to change. So if the town wants to go and ask, instead of going for a lip, I think the town has to get a reasonable amount of money for that property, which includes what it's worth as a lot which you can build a duplex on. So I personally believe that the best interest of the town is to proceed with a lip for an affordable housing project, because I think this is town land. We have very little of it. We know that we need affordable housing projects. I know that there weren't any responses, but I don't think that that means we shouldn't consider to try and get some more responses for development. I think that's the best use of the line for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Chris Coletta from One Birch Lane. I am a trustee of the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust and come to speak in that capacity. I want to start out by giving some context and reminding everybody of the trust's mission and what we've been trying to achieve overall, and where 20 Glenwood could fit into that mission. So the mission of the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust is to support and sustain an inclusive and socio-economically diverse community consistent with the policy objectives of the most recent Winchester Housing Production Plan through investment, education, and advocacy. We're facing a long-run challenge to produce attainable housing at scale in this town, where we remain substantially short of the state's 10% threshold. Our goal as a trust is to support the creation of 75 units of low-to-moderate-income rental and homeownership housing by the end of 2027, and we're pursuing multiple approaches to this goal, including funding support through gap equity to larger development projects, looking to create loan programs that will allow existing low-to-moderate-income residents to remain in their homes while Deav restricting them for the future, and researching tax-efficient approaches to encourage property donation to the trust. We know there are multiple town-owned properties that could be developed for affordable housing in the future. There are no easy and obvious paths for a trust such as ours. If there were, this would not be a problem that nearly all cities and towns in eastern Massachusetts are facing. We need to find a better process for the trust, the Select Board, the Housing Partnership, and other constituencies in town to work collaboratively to tackle this problem together, be it at 20 Glenwood or elsewhere. We reiterate our suggestion that we shared with you from the motion of the trust last week to convene a meeting of these groups to discuss strategy on all these properties going forward, to really develop a collaborative approach. Without a dedicated funding source, we as a trust are constantly thinking about the most efficient ways to leverage our limited funds in pursuit of the larger mission the town set before us. You may ask why we didn't pursue the RFP initially, and I'd love to share some of that context. As we imagine the Select Board when embarking on the RFP process did, we anticipated one of two possible outcomes. A third-party developer would acquire the site to create affordable housing, or an offer to purchase for value would be received that met or at least approached the earlier appraised value of the asset. Either of these outcomes would have been great from the trust's perspective. If a developer acquired the property, affordable housing stock would be increased, and the trust would be in a position to utilize its limited funds in other ways. Or, as stated in the RFP, if sold for value, those dollars would have gone to the trust to further our overarching mission. Even at half of that appraised value, that would have been over $200,000, which the trust would have then been in a position to further leverage to advance our long-run mission. What we did not anticipate was only one offer would be received at less than 10% of that appraisal and that offer being accepted. Perhaps we should have anticipated that. Had we, we would have approached this process much differently. While we have not directly developed housing through the trust yet, this trust, with the skills and experiences of those who make it up, is more than capable of executing on this development. The chairperson of the trust, Marty Jones, who couldn't be here this evening, is the former president and CEO of Mass Development, which is the state's quasi-public finance and development agency. And prior to that, she led a large real estate firm responsible for the management and development of thousands of apartments. I'm the chief investment officer of one of eastern Massachusetts' leading owners and developers of commercial and residential real estate, and prior to that was a partner in a real estate private equity firm that provided the capital behind thousands of residential units. On our trust, we have multiple real estate attorneys and others who bring a wealth of varied experience, perspective, and passion to the trust's mission. If given the opportunity to execute on the development of 20 Glenwood, we are confident we can do so successfully. We're pursuing multiple paths to that execution. That range from partnering with affordable housing groups, engaging third parties to oversee the development, and execution directly through individuals on the trust. We believe all these approaches are viable. And as previously stated, we're positioned to act quickly to demolish the home in advance of any permitting or construction process for that affordable housing unit, hopefully addressing some of the valid concerns of the neighborhood as it relates to the current condition of the property. We had anticipated an outcome of this process that would position the trust to leverage its funds in other ways to advance our mission. That didn't happen. And given the choice between the receipt of $40,000 in sale proceeds or the opportunity to execute on the creation of a home at 20 Glenwood, we believe strongly that the purpose for which the Affordable Housing Trust was created by this town is best served by allowing the trust to pursue development at 20 Glenwood. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Come on up. For support. Yes, yes. Just stick your name and your address, please.
I'm Melissa Drosky. This is my husband, Trevor Drosky, and we live at 22 Glenwood Ave. So good evening. My name is Melissa Drosky and I live at 22 Glenwood Ave, one of the abutting property owners of 20 Glenwood. There are a few points I want to highlight to assist the Planning Board in making its decision on how to proceed with the unused lot. I've heard there is a concern from some of the committee that the neighbors were unaware this property was for sale. This is not the case. We were all given letters in the mail stating the town's intent with 20 Glenwood. Secondly, my land extends past the paved driveway and the lot in question is smaller than it appears. My property line extends about 10 to 15 feet past the driveway leading to my house and potential builders need to factor in its true property lines rather than solely assessing the lot visually. The pavement next to 20 Glenwood may look like a public street, but it's actually private property that can't be used to store heavy machinery or equipment for construction. Instead, that equipment would need to remain on the small lot of 20 Glenwood or on the public street, which is already narrow. Due to the lot's size, the land doesn't have as much value. It may be, it may have been appraised at a higher dollar value, but the location prevents most people from being interested in the property besides the abutting homes. My house is set back from the street and on the right side of my driveway. Personally, I have no interest in adding the lot to the left side of my driveway because it doesn't connect to my usable yard in any way. To me, the best way that the land can be effectively used is to add it to the existing lot of 18 Glenwood. But most importantly, the current structure is beyond repair and a hazard to the neighborhood. My understanding is that the area has been abandoned for about 40 years. The town has been in control of this land for years and nothing has come of it. The structure is dangerous and continues to further degrade. The land has trash and broken glass, yet the no trespassing sign means we aren't allowed to clean it up for the sake of kids and pets living nearby. There are poisonous plants on the property that are not being removed and wild animals are seen roaming in and out of the dilapidated building. In conclusion, 20 Glenwood has been a hazard and an eyesore on Glenwood Ave for decades. The town has not acted on demolishing the building or cleaning the lot during its five years of ownership to keep the Winchester residents safe in the area. Today, I'm here urging the Planning Board to move forward with the sole offer and have the new owners from 18 Glenwood demolish the building and clean the land at their own expense within the nine-month timeframe as stated in the RFP. Doing so would allow the residents to have the resolution we have all along been waiting for. Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment?
Hey. Justin McKeough from 18 Glenwood. So since the Board accepted our proposal seven weeks ago, there have been several claims made against our proposal that have now been refuted. There was a claim that the lot can support a single or multifamily unit, but the Town Council has confirmed that the lot is unbuildable. There was a claim that our offer was too low, but the updated town appraisal of $50,000 has proven our valuation to be entirely reasonable and the appraisal explicitly doesn't factor policy remediation. There was a claim that our proposal only benefits ourselves. You can see from my neighbors, as well as a signed document that we sent to the Select Board from 16 other members of our community who expressed collective support for this acquisition. There was a claim that reopening the RFP might fetch a better offer, but there have been no other bids back when the assumption that this was a buildable unit, and now that's confirmed that it's not buildable, there's really only value to the abutters, and you heard from both of them here today. We really don't know what more evidence the Board needs to move forward at this point. Reopening of the RFP will cause our entire neighborhood to lose trust in the Select Board and its ability to make responsible decisions for this town. It'll also put into serious doubt whether the town of Winchester can actually run a fair RFP process. We want to make sure the Board doesn't lose sight of the most pressing issue, which is the dire state of the building, as expressed by my neighbors. It continues to pose a public safety hazard. There seem to be some doubt if the structure will be demolished under our ownership. I can assure you, that is our most pressing matter. That's the thing that we want to do the most, is get rid of that thing. It's mentioned before, it's worth saying again, there's poisonous plants, raccoons roaming the yards. I have a text chain with some of the neighbors saying, hey, the raccoons are out, don't let the dogs out, right? So there's poisonous plants, there's caved-in roof, falling beams, it's just the constant eyesore for our community. We've made a commitment to our neighbors through our RFP response and the purchase and sale to demolish the building, and that's exactly what we're going to do at our own expense. We ask the Board to not have any more delays. Please proceed with executing the purchase and sale as outlined and firmly, finally bring a resolution to this issue that's been plaguing our neighborhood for so long. Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Come on up, Matt.
Hi. Pamela Court, 112 Arlington Street. I've spoken to you before about this process and about the property and the value of the process, and I have to say I'm still baffled. I'm baffled that the Chair of the Planning Board had to send a letter to you about the collaborative process when it's the second time he's had to address this body about a collaborative process with that Board. I'm baffled that you were given the authority through Town Meeting to do this for the purpose of affordable housing and the Affordable Housing Trust wasn't allowed to speak at the last meeting. I'm baffled that one Select Board member said that they didn't want to hear from anybody else, that another Select Board member requested that for the public's benefit, that the people who came here and volunteered their time to watch the meeting and represented their Boards weren't permitted to speak, and that no one else made a motion to give them an opportunity to speak on behalf of the community and on behalf of Town Meeting. I don't want to repeat some of the things that Deaf said, but I'm confused about the lot being labeled unbuildable. I'm confused about the new appraisal. A 40B does not have to adhere to the zoning regs and a house most certainly is buildable on that lot by virtue of the fact that there are other homes in this community and in other communities on lots that size or smaller. I don't understand the appraisal. And as an example, we are going to be asked as Town Meeting members to approve the purchase of an 1,800 square foot lot off of Waterfield for $155,000. That is most certainly not a buildable lot. That is a lot that sold last June for a little over $115,000. So we are now going to be paying $40,000 more for a lot that the MBTA bought, that we should have bought directly, to buy it for $155,000, smaller than this property. I don't understand that. I don't understand that if we're saying that this lot on Glenwood is only worth 40,000 or 50,000, why don't we get the lot on Waterfield reassessed so that we're not paying $155,000 for 1,800 square feet? Again, I don't want to repeat some of the things that were said, but I do have in here in my notes that I wanted to talk about the violation of trust and the violation of trust to Town Meeting, a 200-member body that's elected to represent the members of this community and to help benefit affordable housing and those that couldn't otherwise live here. And it was very clear in the intent when we gave the authority to this Board that this was to be for the benefit of affordable housing. If that trust is violated, it concerns me. It concerns me as a Town Meeting member whether I would ever want to vote in favor of giving this Board the authority to make any decisions about the dispersments of funds and the allocation of funds that is normally a Town Meeting responsibility. I appreciate the time that you put into this. I know it's been contentious. I know it's been full of angst for some people, but I urge you to consider the original intent of why you had the authority to make these decisions in the first place, and I urge you to have respect for your fellow Board members, the collaborative process, and for Town Meeting, who gave you the authority in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you. My name is David Orico. My office is at 362 Washington Street. I was on this Board several years ago and one of the successful things that we did was acquiring 20 Glenwood for the sole purpose of building an affordable unit, an affordable home. So it's a little disheartening to see where we're at now, but I think everybody realizes how things fall by the wayside. People get busy, they're working on bigger projects, and here we are. But we put a lot of time, effort, and resources into acquiring that property to build a modest affordable house. So I would ask, and it is buildable, you know, as other people have said, using the lip process, you can build a home there. So me personally, you know, again, I meant a lot, I put a lot of time in myself and would be willing to jump in again to help with the various Board members. My background is in real estate, building, valuing. This is not an insurmountable project, but you've got a lot of loose ends. I would ask the Board to take a deep breath. There is, to me, there's no rush to sell this for $40,000. And the reality is, value-wise, it has different values to different people. Yes, it does make sense to an abutter that it's worth $40,000, although you would look into the added benefit to that lot if they could get a second unit out of it. So is the Board going to put a deed restriction on that to say, if you get this, you know, you forfeit the right to build, to increase to a duplex? But again, the goal was an affordable unit here. And, you know, for years, there's always been the issue with affordable housing in Winchester, and I was always, I'm always an advocate of the smaller, single-family here duplex here versus the larger projects. And this was a great opportunity, and this is why we jumped on it. So I would ask the Board to take a deep breath, give the housing folks, and I will jump in 100%, give us 90 days to come back with a plan in place to build a single-family home there. It's incredibly achievable. I don't know why, again, people get busy with other projects, but I pledge that we'll get this back on tracks if you can take a breath, deep breath, give us 90 days to, there should be no rush to get this off the table. It means more than $40,000. It's an achievable project, so appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? John, come on up.
John Serbeer. I live at 9 Chestnut Street and I chair the Housing Partnership Board. I just want to make two brief comments. I'm impressed by the work that the Affordable Housing Trust and the Planning Board has done over the last couple of weeks that's been described to you, that's been submitted. I'm impressed by, and summarized, I'm impressed by the comments tonight. I'm impressed by the comments that David Orico just made, Pam Court just made. I mean, the work of that trust and the Planning Board deserves to be listened to, deserves to be discussed in depth. They've got expertise and I would encourage the Select Board to do that. The second comment I'd make is, the existing house was built in 1908. It has been there for 115 years in there. Winchester, the Boston area, is in the middle of a housing crisis. We shouldn't be removing housing without replacing it. And I think that attention needs, priority needs to be given to looking at the various options for replacing it with, you know, David Orico, take advantage of David Orico's offer, take advantage of the development experience that exists within the Affordable Housing Trust. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. We have three hearings that we need to get through. We first have Verizon's granted location on River Street. Come on up, sir. Matt, how are you?
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Lassimaro, M-A-R-R-E-R-O. An employee of Pike, P-I-K-E, Hellicom and Renewables LLC, authorized contractor for Verizon New England Incorporated. Verizon New England has asked me to speak on their behalf about this petition. Verizon is hereby petitioning the Select Board of the Town of Winchester to place one 4-inch concrete-encased conduit, starting at existing pole number four located on the public way of River Street and running approximately 35 feet in a southwesterly direction towards the property line of 25 River Street. Verizon is hereby making this request on behalf of the owners of 25 River Street. They are requesting new service for their block A construction on River Street, understanding that it would be a 52-residence building that they have on River Street. Can also answer any questions that the Select Board might have about this petition.
Great. Matt, did you want anything?
Well, the engineering department has reviewed it and has no comments.
Is there anyone in the public here on the granted location for Verizon on River Street that wants to be heard? All right. Hearing none. I'll close that portion of the hearing. Any discussion or questions from any Board members? All right. Accept the motion.
We approve the granted location for Verizon to install approximately 35 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to provide Verizon service to 25 River Street.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, sir, for coming in. Appreciate it. Eversource granted location for Cambridge Street. I'll call that hearing to order. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Jackie Deffey, Eversource, and Sterilelectric, T-B-A, Eversource. We would like to install approximately 50 feet of conduit in Cambridge Street, and this work is to provide electric service to an electric vehicle charging station at 353 Cambridge Street.
All right. Matt, anything else?
I just wanted to note that this section of Cambridge Street, most of Cambridge Street, is under Mastott jurisdiction, but this is a section of Cambridge Street that was discontinued previously and is now under Town Control, and that's why it's here for a granted location.
Anyone from the public here on this granted location for Eversource on Cambridge Street wants to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll open up to Board members for questions or discussion. All right. Hearing done. Take a motion.
We approve the granted location for Eversource to install approximately 50 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to provide Verizon service to 25 River Street.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, sir, for coming in. Appreciate it. Eversource granted location for Cambridge Street. I'll call that hearing to order. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Jackie Deffey, Eversource, and Sterilelectric, T-B-A, Eversource. We would like to install approximately 50 feet of conduit in Cambridge Street, and this work is to provide electric service to an electric vehicle charging station at 353 Cambridge Street.
All right. Matt, anything else?
I just wanted to note that this section of Cambridge Street, most of Cambridge Street, is under Mastott jurisdiction, but this is a section of Cambridge Street that was discontinued previously and is now under Town Control, and that's why it's here for a granted location.
Anyone from the public here on this granted location for Eversource on Cambridge Street wants to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll open up to Board members for questions or discussion. All right. Hearing done. Take a motion.
We approve the granted location for Eversource to install approximately 50 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to provide service for electric vehicle charging station at the commercial property at 353 Cambridge Street.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Our next license is an all-alcohol restaurant license and the application from Sergio Inc. doing business as Restaurante Serena. Come on up.
This is mic, can we charge?
I think that one's working.
Should we plug in?
Yeah. Can you, Michelle, put that mic that's lights off? Come on up, sir. Have a seat. How are you?
Good evening. Good. Oh, Paul, as well. Sure.
I don't know. Ask me that at the end of the night. Just getting going here.
Thank you.
If you could just state your name.
Yes. My name is Chris Fallon. I'm an attorney over in Malden with offices at 99 Highland Ave in Malden. And I think it might behoove everybody to acknowledge or at least have me disclose that the gentleman to my immediate left is of no relation. I may need.
A lot of people make that clear when they walk in, so.
I was told that, yeah.
I do it every week.
We're here to seek permission for a liquor license at the property known as 831 Main Street in Winchester and specifically for the purpose of opening an Italian cuisine restaurant at said location. The property is currently owned by a gentleman by the name of Vincenzo Cincolaco. I know I bastard that name and please forgive me, and I could have done better, but he's the trustee of the TAA Realty Trust. The only other documentation that I have here tonight and will certainly curtail much of what I was pointing on stating tonight in support of this application, is some additional green cards, return receipts, certified mail that came in in the last two days. My office met with the Liquor Board clerk, I believe her name is Jean, and let me point out that she was very, very accessible and quite on top of her game, and made the process a lot easier. And I only mention that to you because we did have to mail out 363 certified letters. But, and of the 363, 270 of them roughly are back, and there's about another 25 that were undelivered, green cards that I have here. So, having said all this, I am proud to introduce to the board tonight my client. And he's a gentleman that is known in the city of Malden as a restaurateur. He is a, he has had a business, a restaurant business in Malden, an Italian restaurant for almost 20 years, 25 years now. He has absolutely no issues with the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, the Police Department in Malden, absolutely no incidents of record in his entire tenure in the city of Malden, again commencing Honor of About 2006. And he'll speak to that issue very briefly in a few moments. We are, we have submitted, I believe, any and all documentation besides the mailing that is required statutorily and in accordance with your liquor license ordinances, and we have done all the publications, paid all the fees, and again, I believe respectfully that we are properly before the board for consideration of this application. Again, my client, who I have not named yet, is, his name is Giovanni Longo. He lives in Arlington. Again, he has, he was the owner of Restaurante Serena, which was located on Lebanon Street in Malden, in the Maplewood area. And again, he ran an Italian restaurant at that location for nearly 20 years. If not for an issue in Malden regarding development of some new land, vacant land down in the area of Maplewood Square in Malden, he'd still be operating his business in Malden. And when the, when he had no option, Mr. Longo took his skills and his sophistication to the Beacon Hill Hotel, which he currently works at on Charles Street in Malden, at Malden.
Boston.
I'll work on that. Charles Street in, by Mass General. And I think, again, he's just been a sensational restaurant owner, well-involved in the community over in Malden for 20 years. I could go on, but I think you might want to hear from him, much more so than you would like to hear me continue.
Sure. Let me just stop right there and just ask if staff has reviewed the application and verified that it's in order.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, we're good on our end from staff, but Giovanni, nice to meet you, if there's anything you want to address the board.
Nice to meet you, and thank you, too, having me here.
Welcome to Winchester.
Thank you.
What's your timeline to be operational, do you think?
Timeline?
Yeah.
Couple months, if everything goes okay, to open the door for the public. I hope so, you know? I miss my restaurant. I'm working for the Beacon Hill Hotel right now, but it's not the same to have your restaurant and run the dining room and the kitchen and everything else. It's my passion. And that's it, just waiting to see if I can open the door in Winchester.
Great. I'm gonna see if anyone's from, anyone in the public here for this all-alcohol license that wants to be heard or addressed? Okay, seeing no one here, I'll close that portion. Any questions or discussion from any board members? Nope. So, I think everything's in order, I think, make a motion.
We approve the application from Sergio Inc. doing business as Restaurante Serena located at 831 Main Street for a restaurant all-alcohol license with the town of Winchester.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you, and I think you'll be very happy with the results that you authorized here tonight. Thank you, and cousin.
If we know where you are, we'll find you.
See, you beat me to a pint. Thank you very much.
You might want to wait, Giovanni, for all these guys on this side of the room to leave in a couple of minutes. They might have some questions for you about your menu and stuff, so. All right, moving on, senior circuit breaker, come on up, Dan Rich. Anyone else here? No.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is your vote. We start at $1,200, and the bidding goes up 50 to 200 percent. Last year, you voted 50 percent for the seniors. There's about 20 people that qualify, so this year, the tax is, tax credit's 1,200, so it'll be up to 1,800. Last year was 1,755.
Is there a recommendation from the Assessors Board?
Your call.
Your call? Okay.
Come on, Scrooge, what do you got?
Give it to them all, give it all. It's Winchester. Give it away!
I have a question, Dan. Which is, in looking at the memo, the last sentence, reduction in the payment will impact the taxpayer's eligibility in receiving the circuit breaker for the following year. So, it's a one-time reduction, it's a...
This is something filed annually, someone applies for it. The problem being, if you give them this exemption this year, say they get the $1,800 here, that reduces what they actually paid in taxes. So, next year, when they go through the circuit breaker again, they still have to, they have to pay over 10 percent to qualify in state income tax to be a circuit breaker. So, this could put them under that number, but the way things are going here, I don't see it happening. So, I wouldn't be too worried about that.
Would we anticipate 20 plus or minus, is that?
Yeah, it's tough to say, because it's the age of the people and their income, and so it's a lot of little different things that have to qualify on, but yeah, it's always around. We all, two years it's been that, and we've reviewed to know it before, somewhere in that range.
Anyone else? Questions? What are people thinking for our numbers here?
Well, we can do up to 200 percent, right? Is that, you know, that would be the most that we would allow? I mean, this is, you know, 20 residents that obviously really, you know, meet a very specific need. I mean, is there any way that we could capture more residents, you know, that are in that, or is that...
We've tried. We put everything out there we possibly can, with the Jenks, the newsletters, the tax bills that go, we put a letter with that. You just don't, you just can't get any more response. And people apply for other exemptions in town, and we talked to them about it as well, but it's hard, because it's a combination of their income and your assessed value of your home. So, if their value's over that, no matter what, if you qualify, you're out, so it's...
So, we've probably seen this number decrease, you know...
It's only been a few years that we've done this, so. It's pretty close.
It's pretty close. What do you think about the, you know, for it to go to 200 percent of the original credit?
I mean... That's your call.
What do you guys think? I mean, you know, here...
It's generous, it's a good amount. Unfortunately, there are people who really do need it, and most of them who do this also get other exemptions. The only problem, if you do the 200 percent, that will come close to it having an effect might have, because you have to make up this money somehow. So, it happens that all of us pay an extra difference, whatever, they're not paying, the town's paying it. And when we stayed at 150, last year, we were under that amount, because we have a, there's about $50,000, $60,000, depending where the values are again this year, that are in play, that would not make the taxes the individuals like us have to pay anymore. So, this would come closer at 200 percent, but it wouldn't be a deal breaker by any means.
Other thoughts?
175, guy.
That's exactly right. I was gonna go, John.
Inflation, I'm like, all right, compassionate tonight.
175 percent.
Is there a, if it goes to 200 percent, for instance, is it still about the, it's impacting the same number of people?
The people who are repacted, it's already been decided, they've qualified. This depends, it's how much they're gonna get now, is what we're deciding here.
And if we go up, we said, you know, at where it is, at 150 from last time, you know, it's not really gonna impact anyone for next year if we go to 200 percent?
We don't know, because you won't know, they have to file their income tax again next year, you know, for '23, and we won't know that until next year. I mean, it could affect someone, but more likely, it's the case of values going up would kick somebody out more than their income, I would think.
175?
175.
Feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, way, Mike. Yeah, I mean, it's fine. I mean, it's a, we're looking at a percentage, but the total, you know, amount of the credit is pretty small for someone, so it's, you know, that's why I looked at 200, because we're looking at 20 people, they obviously meet a very specific need, you know, out of a town of 22,000-plus, so that's the only reason why I looked at 200, so, but a...
Economicist.
I get it, I get it, but, you know, 1,700 bucks is, you know, is helpful probably, but probably not hugely impactful for somebody that's struggling here, you know, so, it's fine.
Somebody want to make a motion? Anyone?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Doesn't have to be Anthea, it could be anybody, just so you guys...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve a 200 percent, you know, tax credit for the seniors as listed, so.
Second.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Dia?
Yes.
John?
I'm sort of stuck at 175, so I guess I have to say no.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, I'll vote, I'll vote yes.
Oh, that's easy. Way to vote.
I gotta do the math.
Hang out to dry.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Principal man.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Good night.
Next up is the capital funding plan.
Next, I make the motion.
I should've. I thought I was looking at you. What do you think of me? You don't make any motions. So, now I know.
True. True.
You gotta turn it on, Beth.
We have to watch over here?
You don't have to watch, but there's gonna be something projected.
Okay.
I'll move. What's you guys... I can't do it. Week, 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 week. At least you went up to 200 percent. I can respect that.
Not bad, not bad.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Good night.
So, this has kind of been a long time in the making. We've had it on our agenda on a couple of different occasions, but the night has gone a little over on some of the other items, so we've kind of put this more at the forefront to kind of have a meaningful discussion tonight. But, you know, we've, kind of dates back to last budget cycle, when we were having those budget summits, for those that were on the board at the time, we kind of kicked this around, and on and off, we've had discussions. Over the summer, we had several presentations from capital planning, ARPA work, you know, all different reports from town management. We've had input in asking for data, so it kind of brought us to this moment. You know, we have town meetings starting next week. I see our capital representatives are here tonight, Chair Jimmy Johnson and Roger McPeak. We did invite FinCom as well, but they're meeting at the same time. And, you know, I think there's some anxiety, I guess would be the word that I would use, for some of the things that capital planning is proposing for fall town meeting, between capital planning and the Finance Committee, and where we're kind of headed with, you know, the big picture. So, I think it was two meetings ago, John, or three meetings ago, we had a brief discussion. We kind of gave instructions to town management to kind of put together some type of plan that we could look at and kind of have a discussion, and that's kind of the backdrop of why we're here. Is that everyone's recollection?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So...
Whatever's easier for you guys.
So, with that, that's...
I'm always nervous about moving this thing.
If you break it, you buy it.
I know.
It needs to be replaced anyway.
Add to the list.
TV for the Select Boardroom.
To edit the spreadsheet.
Put that in.
Mike broke the monitor.
All right, so, there's a lot of information and a lot of numbers here, and a lot of slides, so please jump in if you have questions as we go along. I broke the presentation kind of into two pieces. First is kind of doing a deep dive into the capital requests that we got for this fiscal year, fiscal year, as well as kind of things that we know as staff are coming down the pike. And so, really, it builds off of that spreadsheet I gave out maybe two meetings ago, that kind of tried to summarize all those things, and there's some tweaks since that spreadsheet went out, but it's, that was the basis. And the second half of the presentation talks about what are our options and how we can fund that. So, where we start is the capital planning process. So, as you folks may be aware, every June, we send, the Town Manager's Office sends an email and a series of spreadsheets out to our department heads asking for requests for the capital planning process. Those come in by the end of June, early July, and then the Capital Planning Committee, with Roger and Jimmy here this evening, meet over the summer. Town, Mark Tuga, the Assistant Town Manager, is the Town Manager's Office kind of representative to the capital planning process and is at the table at all of those meetings. The Capital Planning Committee goes through a ranking process, and the result of that is the recommendations that come forward to fall and spring town meeting each year. So, what we show here is the BSF here is the Building Stabilization Fund, and the CSF is the Capital Stabilization Fund. So, those are the two stabilization funds that the town has that we use to fund our capital needs, to the extent that we are able to do that through those two funds. So, what we've shown here is FY '25 funded. Now, the FY '25 designation is a little confusing, because we're obviously in FY '24, and we're talking about things that are becoming to fall town meeting, but that's just the nomenclature that we use, and part of it is because of DRR regulations. So, when I say FY '25, I mean the things that are being, that were submitted this July, July of '23, it'll be funded at fall town meeting and spring '24 town meeting. So, under the, in the Building Stabilization Fund, there was $1.78 million of things that were funded and, or proposed to be funded, so this is, these are articles that are proposed to be going to town meeting either fall or spring, and a total of over $10 million of things that could not be funded. Similarly, for the Capital Stabilization Fund, there were $3.24 million of items that are proposed to be funded, and $855,000 of things that were unfunded. As we go forward, and so this, these out-years are not just requests that came in, but they are also the items that town staff knows that will be coming down the pike. So, these numbers are a combination of those two things, and this is, you can see those numbers obviously are much larger than our stabilization funds are able to support.
I know where to get this in a succeeding slide, but can you tell us about the bubble? Why?
Sure, yeah. So, there's a lot of things that we have that are critical needs, right? Roofs, windows, HVAC systems that either have design that's been completed, or design that will be going forward, most of them at fall town meeting. And so, the natural progression is to follow-up design with construction, right? So, that's why a lot of these things are kind of, like you said, the bubble in FY '26.
Do you think in order to execute $70 million of work, maybe $80 million of work, that we need to have a, for lack of a better term, a clerk of the works to administer this for the town? Do we have adequate staff to execute this work, because we can get all the funding we need, but if we don't have someone to execute it?
Yeah, so, I mean, we do have a, in essence, a capital project manager, right, that helps us, manages and executes the, from a contract perspective and a construction oversight perspective, not a clerk of the works where they're necessarily out there. We work very closely with our design teams on all of these projects, right? So, they, usually, we hire the engineer of record as, under a construction administration contract, where they're out there overseeing the contractor. But there's certainly a lot of work in terms of the design and overseeing the construction from an administrative and technical perspective. And there's a combination of engineering, DPW, and, you know, this capital program... this capital program manager who kind of sits in the engineering department but serves a variety of people, so I think.
As I'm channeling my inner John Miller.
Sure, yeah, no, I think it's.
You know, we'll fund that if you need that, but we need to know you need that.
Right, and I think it's a fair discussion that if we get to the point where we're funding forty million dollars of capital projects in the next year, we have to look at whether we have staff resources to be able to support that, but that's part of the conversation, for sure.
Thank you.
And I think too, what we're spending, you know, on these projects in hiring a clerk of the works for each individual project, right, because we usually are, are hiring somebody to do that, right, for the, for the project.
Sure, but there, but it's, it's fair, there's, there's, I'm sorry?
Did you say that was the, the engineered?
So, I'll just speak for engineering projects, right, we typically, like on a bridge project, we have the engineer of record who is working, who has designed the project, permitted the project, and then we hire that same firm for, as a construction administration, so they will typically have.
So they put their requisitions and all those types of things?
They'll have somebody on site full-time or part-time, depending on the needs of the project.
Representing us.
Representing us, overseeing the contractor, ensuring that they're doing the work per the plan, right, and we have, you know, weekly job meetings with, with all staff involved, and obviously, we have, you know, engineering staff is always out there observing and, you know, visiting the site daily, so, but I think it's a fair question that if we're gonna fund this much work, do we have the resources from a staff perspective to be able to support that?
With, with the Lynch project going on as well.
With the Lynch project going on as well.
That we are doing, that person that you've identified is taking on an expanded role with this school building project than we've done in any other school project, right?
That person, this, that role was involved in the high school project, for example, in the McColl addition project, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not an exclusive.
There will be a clerk of the works hired for the Lynch project.
Right.
As part of that.
We have a, we have an OPM, owner's project manager.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's, on the Lynch project, it's, you know, we have a lot of people that are, that are working at oversight of that, so, I mean, that's, that's a little bit, I mean, larger of a project. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of the smaller ones maybe that it would be helpful to have somebody onboard.
And like, do we have appropriate redundancy, so, don't laugh, if that person is abducted by aliens, someone can, can take over the work, but also so that they can feel it's appropriate for them to go on a vacation, and, you know, to, to take the vacation in the winter, to take a vacation in the summertime and not risk all of the work is, you know, significantly falling behind, so even if it's a, to your point, like, it's, it's having somebody who's able, who has a capacity to take on the work, but is maybe like in a, in a junior role that can.
So, just summarizing FY twenty-five, which is where we are right now, the over four million dollars of requests into the capital stabilization fund, not including the two point six million dollars of Lynch, recommending for funding is the three point two four, of that, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is for engineering slash studies, similarly for the building stabilization fund, the twelve point three five million recommended for funding, one point seven eight, and then approximately one point one five of that is for engineering studies, so what are those engineering studies? So, in the first part of this, are these, these are the items that are coming before fall town meeting this year, so the first, one, two, five items are related to school or municipal roof design work, which we've talked about, the board actually funded some of the, using ARPA funds, some of the initial studies, this item here, DPW storage garage is a continuation of some design work that's already happened, to improve the facilities at our DPW, town hall library window replacement, engineering, Lincoln School chiller replacement, that's, that Lincoln chiller has been identified by our DPW as a, a critical need in the, in the coming years, town hall bell tower structural view, so the clock tower out here also identified as a critical need, this is just a preliminary engineering and, and assessment, and then we'll go the next step of figuring out what actually needs to be done. Shore Road Bridge Engineering identified by the engineering department, as well as Everett Avenue Culvert, there was a initial culvert inspection done last year for Everett Avenue that identified some issues that need to be addressed, so this is the next phase of that in terms of the, the engineering, and then we kind of have a standard process where we do this initial review, then we do the engineering, and then we come back and request construction the next year.
Is that the ball club, or where is that?
It is, yeah, yep, you wouldn't actually, when you drive over to Everett Ave, you don't, you wouldn't, but if you look to your right particularly, you can see there's some wooden guardrail there, and then the Packer, Packer Ellis Tennis Court, so this is something that's been raised for a couple of years now about being a real, you know, getting to be a safety concern at the tennis courts, and just some needed repairs, so again, this is just a preliminary engineering, which will identify the scope of the problem, and then we'll come back and ask for additional engineering and construction dollars. So, this gets to what your question was, John, about what, what the bubble is, right? So this is the projects that we've identified for, potentially for FY twenty-six, so these are, these are projects that could be submitted in June and July of twenty-four for funding, and then, so I broke this out into two tables, the first table is for building stabilization fund, then there's a similar table for capital stabilization fund, and staff went through and we ranked these in terms of high priority, medium priority, and low priority. So the, the roof repairs here at town hall are high priority, this is a, is a construction estimate based on the preliminary work that we've already had done, town hall HVAC and ADA improvement, so this is work that was already funded, the design of this was already funded by capital in FY twenty-two, this is an updated cost estimate that we just received, they are, have, we were originally somewhere around six and a half million dollars, we added the ADA improvements because the, the size of that construction project triggers us having to bring the, the building into compliance with ADA requirements.
So Beth, when you rank these, and they're high, let's say you've got, did you say life safety is more important than structural integrity, meaning that the bell tower?
This is not, those, these aren't like ranked one through ten.
Okay, so they're just all.
High is just high groups, I did, these are not in any, any order, yeah. Library slate roof replacement, that is again a number we, you know, a good estimate that we have from the initial design that was done, they'll be, they'd be, obviously we'll get a better number for, for the next phase of design. Library window replacement, Amber School Roof, McColl School Roof, Mystic Heating System, this was something that Pete Lawson, our facilities director, identified as a high priority. The items that I have here in red, these numbers are just guesses, there is no engineering that's been done at all for this Mystic School Heating System project, this is what Pete's estimate was, that he put forward to capital for engineering and construction, so this number is a guess. Similarly with the bell tower structural repairs, we don't know what the scope of that work will be, we threw a two million dollar number in there, but I don't have a good idea of what that number will be. Town Hall Window Repair Replacement, that's something that, again, there's, there's proposed for some initial funding at fall town meeting, and part of that will be assessing whether can, there can be some repairs done, or that, whether the build, the windows need to be replaced, so that number again is just an estimate. Lincoln School Chiller Replacement, an estimate, the engineering work could be done this fall if that's funded. Lincoln School Flatwork, this is something that's been on the capitalist for several years, the design was first funded in FY twenty-one and just hasn't, hasn't been able to be funded due to the size of that request. Caretous Roof Replacement, again, an estimate. Winchester Concrete Floor Repair, this is something that the EFPBC has put a request to fall town meeting, a free cash request to fund a hundred thousand dollars in design. This is, again, very much an estimate, that two million dollars, I don't think we know the scope of the need, of the repairs that will be needed, so we, I think through what we thought was a high number there, just as a placeholder. Winchester High School Gym Floor Replacement is something that, again, has been identified as a need and a preliminary study was done that put that cost somewhere around two to two and a half million dollars. DPW Storage Structure, estimated at three million dollars for replacement and construction. Town Hall Floor Auditorium, again, this is a, a low priority, but the thought was if we're doing some renovations to town hall, it might make sense to kind of throw some of these smaller projects in as, as part of the total package. And then the Mystic School Window Replacement, this again was part of a study that was funded through ARPA funds last year. Any questions on any of those before I move on to capital stabilization fund? Okay, so some of these are high, medium, and low priority, the red items here are question marks, so the, some of these are standard ones that are, that are done every year that are funded, so ADA Transition Plan, we, we, capital planning typically funds a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year there, DPW Roads and Sidewalks, similarly half a million dollars. Risk Assessment is one that we've been working on with the police department for several years, and there are some needs that are being addressed through requests in the current fiscal year, this is a projection to expand that to some of the school and other municipal buildings for half a million dollars. Sims Corner Intersection Study, this was a request in FY twenty-five that was not funded through capital, this is to do kind of a preliminary engineering study of that intersection to see how we can better redesign that, it's one that has been a safety concern for years, it was identified as a high priority as part of the transportation master plan, and I can tell you it's one that I receive a lot of calls and emails about from residents in that neighborhood who are concerned, there was just recently an accident up there within the past week. Simley Lachlan Road at Ridge Street, this is one, I'll just speak for myself as former town engineer that I've been put on the list for probably eight years, trying to get something funded to do a preliminary, preliminary engineering study up there. Traffic Calming at Three Locations, Kenwin Park Ave and Palmer Street, this was identified as part of the transportation master plan as one of the highest priorities, those three, those three corridors, and so we kind of grouped them together as one engineering study, and again, that was an FY twenty-five current year request that was not funded. DPW Vehicle Request, this is based on their five-year plan to, to fund in FY twenty-six, a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars worth of requests. Shore Road Bridge Construction, again, until we do the engineering, we won't have any idea, I'm not even sure this is a high priority, they may say it looks great, based on the condition of the pavement at the surface, I'm not sure that that is what we'll hear, so this is an estimate. Similarly with the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts, this two million dollars is an estimate. Wedge Pond Water Quality Improvements, capital did fund last year thirty-five thousand dollars in study for looking at Wedge Pond, and so this would be the next progression in that engineering work is to design some of the things that are recommended. Everett Ave Culvert Construction was estimated at three hundred and ten thousand, this is one that I was, you know, I kind of went back and forth on whether to include it or not, but we did, as you all know, receive a half million dollar earmark this year from the state to look at the installation of the traffic calving and pedestrian improvements in the town center, so I wanted to put it on here just so we keep it on the list of something that we know is, we're gonna have design plans for within the next year, and it's something that we've certainly heard is a priority in terms of improving pedestrian safety in the town center. That eight million dollar number is an estimate until we, we really get into the engineering. Lincoln Playground Basketball Courts and Pavilion, so we are funding some of the, the playground improvements at Leonard Field in the FY twenty-five, and this, this is a request for additional funds to redo the basketball courts and to put in kind of a bath house, not really bath house, but bathroom structure and maybe a concession stand structure out there. Mullen Field Playground Replacement, this is something, just based on what we're extrapolating from the Leonard Field and McDonald Field requests, put four hundred and fifty-five, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that one. Ginfield Pickleball Courts, this was the estimate that Chris Huntress had put together for that, for that project, and then finally in the low priority categories are Winter Pond Water Quality Improvements, Westland at Wild Ave, Westland at Wildwood Street, Johnson Road Construction, and a vehicle request for the fire department. Any questions on this list before I move on?
I guess my reaction to this list is if you take out the, the red guesses of, you know, eleven million dollars, that's a much more doable.
Right.
List of projects through the mediums, or, not that you just shift, you don't shift capital to building stabilization, but it's a much more manageable list of things to get done from the high even down to some of your mediums.
Right.
And to things like playgrounds that we hear about and traffic that we hear about.
The only thing I would say is that these, few of these studies will lead to bigger construction projects, right, so it's a, it's the first step in a multi-year.
But you have, and I'm not suggesting that it isn't, you know, significant to do bridges and downtown, but if, you have three projects that are million, million-plus projects.
Right.
Now, a hundred thousand could become two fifty, five hundred could become seven fifty, very easy, but just in the aggregate, there's a lot more manageable things on that list for now.
I would agree.
Not the previous slide, though.
I would agree.
And some of those things, you know, are on the, you know, we, we could fund through the CPA as well, right, so they would be CPA eligible, so.
This is a question I had to move on to, so I want to come back to that.
So, this slide is just to kind of talk a little bit about what we've seen in terms of cost escalation, so I, I took this information from the memo that VHB put together when we were talking about the Morocco Culvert project and the information we had to provide to DOR ahead of time meeting, so we can look at increasing the borrowing appropriation for that project, so typically when, we would estimate cost escalations, it was somewhere in the two and a half to three percent range, between January twenty twenty-one and January twenty twenty-three, the historical cost estimate increased over twenty-six percent, so who's to say that that will continue, but I think it's, I think the high school, or the, the Lincoln School project will be a good gauge of where we are in terms of construction costs, but it, it's something I think that we all need to be considering when we think about our long-term funding strategy in, in terms of how, how those costs are going up and how they're escalating quickly.
And some of those costs have come down recently for construction, right, I think we even noticed some of that with the Lynch project and everything.
Um, I, I don't want to speak for the Lynch project, but.
I haven't seen anything.
Hey, what do you say? Nothing's come down, has it?
Cost going down?
Yeah.
It's getting in headlines.
Not, not, not coming down, but not, not.
It's leveled.
Right, it's leveled, right, so that's my.
Hopefully it's not, hopefully it's not growing, it continues to grow at twenty-six percent.
Right, that is, if we're using a high mark of twenty.
Wouldn't Jay sneak in, I didn't even see him.
Exactly, media star, Jay.
Okay, so what are our options to fund capital? So, obviously we have these two stabilization funds, capital and building stabilization funds, what, the first option is what we try to do, which is pay as we go, right, so we just try to, you know, pay for projects directly out of those incoming funds each year. We also long-term borrow, so the capital planning committee has a guideline that neither fund should be bonded such that, such that its annual debt service payment exceeds fifty percent of, of its inflow, so as you'll see on the next slide, they're actually below that threshold right now, they, I think, you know, we try to keep a healthy balance in those stabilization funds, because there are things that come up, and I'm probably the biggest culprit of, of, year to year saying, oh, there's a bridge that, you know, suddenly we've gotten an inspection report on that is worse than we thought it was gonna be from the inspection report three years ago, and we need to address this, so, obviously things come up that we need to be able to address quickly. Free cash being an option, so outside of the stabilization funds, short-term we have some ARPA funds available, a, a capital override to potentially increase the direct funding to the, to stabilization funds, debt exclusion override for specific projects, and then as, as you mentioned, Mike, CPA funds, which, should it be adopted in November of twenty twenty-four, would potentially, would be available for appropriation in spring twenty twenty-five town meeting for use in FY twenty-six, which would be July first of twenty twenty-five.
And that would be, just so I understand, that would be FY twenty-seven capital cycle?
Yeah, yeah.
But it would be July twenty twenty-five.
July twenty twenty-five, right, right, the towns portion, not the matching funds from the state, but the towns portion, yeah. So, I took basically the similar information to what we just looked at in terms of the requests to the, to the stabilization funds, and I plotted them alongside the debt service, so this first graph shows the building service, building stabilization fund, so this red line down here is the existing debt service, the dashed purple line is the maximum debt service, which is based on that guideline that I just noted on the last slide, and then the green line is the funds that are available for use, so obviously, you know, we're, we're way over requested in FY twenty-five, pushing those kind of unfunded requests to twenty-six, plus adding the things that we know we want to come, want to have on, in twenty-six, gets us to a very high number of, almost twenty-one million dollars, and then we drop pretty substantially in twenty-seven, and again, these are just estimates.
Like everyone goes on vacation.
Yeah. I mean, that assumes everything in FY twenty-six hits funded, right? And then FY twenty-eight, and I just, I did want to mention that in FY twenty-eight, this includes, the request that came in from our fire chief included, included a twelve million dollar replacement for the Westside Fire Station in FY twenty-eight, now, I left it in there because I think it's worth everybody kind of considering, obviously we wouldn't fund that in one fiscal year, right, there would be design and engineering costs, should we even choose to move forward with that, but I wanted to just put it in there because it is something that.
I mean, that's been sitting there for ten years.
It's been sitting there for a long time.
Yeah. Is it, I guess I didn't know why it wasn't included as a priority, even, even, I mean, is it improved?
The request from the department head was an FY twenty-eight request, so we kept it in twenty. 28. We didn't include it as a 26 request. There's, I mean, there's been no engineering or anything to even, you know, predict what the cost estimate for that would be.
Beth, in this, in this table, FY26 is potentially, it's a combination of FY25 unfunded.
Right, so we, right.
So then that assumes.
And the things that, the studies that are being done, so the things that were not funded in 25, plus the things that are studies that are happening in 25 that will lead to construction in 26.
So it's essentially like that, that some portion of the FY25 bar rolls into FY26, and then that assumes FY26, we fund, thus FY27 is.
Right, yep.
Do we know the, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is on the other slide coming up, but do we know the availability of funds that are going into the stabilization funds in the, you know, these future year? I mean, I guess I'd like to see.
Yeah, so there's somewhere around 3.6 million going into both the building stabilization fund and the capital stabilization fund in FY25, and those numbers obviously grow. So we have that information. I don't have it.
Are there, are there any, you know, years here where those numbers get, you know, as far as debt service coming off or anything like that that is?
Well, you can see, so that's the debt service, right? It does drop off, but it, but it's, yeah, I mean, the inflows grow at 2.5%. It's not like a dramatic increase in inflows. So this is, available funds is what is left in the funds after debt service comes off that we can spend.
And if you looked at the prior, you know, five years as well, you know, what would that, that look like as far as the?
Well, I have that information. We can, we can graph it, but I don't have it here this evening, yeah. So the next slide is the capital stabilization fund, which is basically the same analysis. As you noted, there's this big hump in 26 because some of the things in 25 didn't get funded, and in 26, I included that $8 million for the town center construction. I think overall, the capital stabilization fund is healthier, but there are some long-term construction projects that, should those initial studies be funded, will lead to bigger projects down the line. So where are we for FY, projections for FY26? So specifically, we have, for this capital stabilization fund, we have $14.6 million of requests, we have $2.67 million available funds, and if you look at what I call bonding capacity, it's that 50, basically, the inflows with the, with the 50% reduction plus the existing debt for FY26 removed, so we'd have about 800, and if you use that, kind of this maximum line here, what we have available to bond, minus the existing debt service. And similarly, for the building stabilization fund. So the thing I wanted to note at the bottom here was just some round numbers in terms of borrowing. A million dollars borrowed for 20 years at 5% is about $80,000 in debt service.
So do I understand that the available funds, 2.6, and available bonding is 2 plus 6 plus 800,000, therefore 3.4, or is 800,000 a part of 2.6?
So, right, so there's, that money can either be used to pay debt service, or it can be used to pay as you go.
I think 836 is included in the 2.6 number, right?
Right, right.
That was my question.
And does this include also the general override that we passed with the Lynch Project as well?
Yes, yep.
So is that in the building stabilization fund?
Capital.
It's in the capital, okay.
So one of the things that we, and we talked about at a previous meeting, was the previous policy about retiring debt to the capital stabilization fund. So the previous policy was that each year, the value of the debt that retired off the general fund would be redirected to the capital stabilization fund in the following fiscal year budget. So that was based on a base year of FY20, FY2008, and then that policy ended in FY20 when the new operating slash capital override passed. So there was approximately $700,000 of additional funds going into the stabilization fund each year that was eliminated in 2020 when that override passed. So one of the things we could consider doing as a, kind of a long-term funding strategy is restarting that retiring debt. So right now, in FY24, there's about $623,000 of debt in the general fund. If you look over the long term, well, over the short term, it really doesn't do much for us, right? Next year, we'd get about $3,000 that could go into the capital stabilization fund, but over the long term, that number increases. So by the time you're 10 years out, you know, it's $891,000 going to that fund.
So I have a question. Could we retire debt to the building stabilization fund? Is there anything that prohibits us, since that's the one with the biggest need and capital is the healthiest of the, or less anemic of the funds, let's put it that way? Is there anything that would stop us from retiring that debt to building?
I don't think so. I'd want to talk to the folks from the capital planning committee. I think probably the reason it went to the capital stabilization fund is because you can pay for building needs out of the capital stabilization funds. You can't vice versa, pay for capital needs out of the building stabilization fund, but it would be worth, you know, conversation about what made the most sense, I think.
Is there a budget impact for us, you know, using the retiring debt for?
Only that it doesn't go to funds.
Right.
The operating budget, right?
Right.
So, yeah. It's all the same pot of money.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would be interesting to see what that impact would be, you know, if we're pushing an operating override, you know, sooner by doing that.
I mean, I think in the first four years there.
Yeah.
Not $100,000, $120,000 is probably. Certainly in 25, it doesn't have any, have any impact at all, really. Okay, so the next piece of the kind of equation is free cash. So obviously, we have a very healthy free cash position at the end of FY23. We have $20 million in free cash and operating reserve of 18.6%. We are proposing to use just over $1.7 million of free cash at fall town meeting. So I just did a very kind of quick back-of-the-envelope calculation that if we assume we want to keep a minimum operating reserve of 14%, which obviously is up for conversation, our operating reserve policy is below that, but if we, you just throw in 14% out as a potential target, we assume we need $2.4 million to balance the FY24, FY25 budget, which again is just an estimate at this point, and assume we had $2 million in turnbacks, we could potentially have $2.5 million available at spring town meeting. The big star there is that we have not completed our three-year budget projections yet, and so I just feel a little uncomfortable at this point recommending the use of free cash until we get further into the budget development process. But certainly, as we get to spring town meeting, that's certainly something that we could ARPA funds, so as you all know, we have, we received $6.8 million, we've committed 3.4 plus another just over $1.8 million that we have kind of reserved for projects in development. So that leaves us just over $1.5 million of ARPA funds that we have available to program going forward. So kind of tallying all that up, including that free cash, available stabilization funds, free cash, ARPA funds, it brings us to about $9.3 million. So what is kind of the management recommendation at this point? So what we're thinking is that we would recommend a, some sort of debt exclusion override to kind of get us over this initial hurdle, to fund the immediate needs related to the building improvements, roofs, windows, HVAC, and other high-priority recreation projects. We would utilize the remaining ARPA funds, and then we would develop a long-term funding strategy that would increase on a reliable, consistent basis, funding to those stabilization funds through either an annual general fund appropriation, retiring debt, or use of free cash for supplementation on an annual basis. So I think there's kind of two pieces to this, is how do we get through this initial hurdle of where we have a big bubble of stuff to get through, and then how do we look long-term about increasing funding to the stabilization funds? So what I did was basically take those same two spreadsheets that we looked at in detail for the building stabilization funds. These are the same projects, high, medium, and low categories, same dollar values, and what I did at the, in the far corner here is recommend a funding strategy. So BASF means that it would just be funded directly out of the stabilization fund in FY26. Those are, all the stabilization fund projects are identified in blue on this table. The orangey ones are ARPA funds, potential ARPA funds, and the green ones is recommended override. And I'll get, I'm just going to go through this slide quickly because I think I have a better summary slide at the end. Similarly, for the capital stabilization fund, and as you noted, Michelle, there's a lot more projects that can be funded directly out of the staples, the capital stabilization funds. I did identify the Packer Hills Tennis Courts as an override, potential override project, and then the downtown traffic calming improvements, should we choose to consider moving forward that at this point. So this slide basically breaks down the projects. Everything in green here is a recommended override project. It's broken down into priority of high and medium, and then I didn't include any of the low projects in, as an override project. The two projects here in orange are the projects recommended to be funded through ARPA, so I recommended the Mullen Field Playground Replacement and a library window replacement. Those are projects that I think can be done, and we have enough information to move those forward in the timeline that we have available in terms of the commitment of our ARPA funds. And then finally, was all those projects to be funded directly out of the two stabilization funds, which I didn't kind of tally here, but we can go back and look. So really, there's, in the high priority, there's about $20 million of projects that could be considered for an override, so those are Town Hall HVAC, library roof slate replacement, Amber School Roof, McCall School Roof, McCall Mystic School Heating System, Town Hall Bell Tower, again, these are, some of these numbers are still unknowns, and then the Packer Hills Tennis Court repairs and engineering and construction. And then the medium priority, there's another about $17 million worth of projects, so Town Hall Window Repair Replacement, Lincoln School Chiller, Lincoln School Flatwork, and again, these are up for conversation, right, in terms of the high, medium, high and medium priorities. Winchester High School Concrete Floor, Winchester High School Gym Floor, and then the downtown traffic calming. Does anybody, before I move off of the slide, people have questions or comments?
You know, we had discussed last year, you know, before the Lynch override, and we can disagree about this a little bit, but the, we intended that general override that went on as the second question with Lynch to be for one of the roofs, McCall really, I think is what we were looking at for debt service on that, so we would have that $400,000. So, you know, I think we saw that as a high priority. Pete said it was in awful shape, he wouldn't even walk on it. That's why we would, you know, I think that's why we pushed that forward, was the conversation around the table at that time. And, you know, I think we couldn't, because it was a general override, we couldn't, you know, make it specific to a project, but that was the conversation for that one. And I think we were trying to nibble away at some of this stuff without adding another override, you know, onto people, right? I mean, we haven't even seen a Lynch override yet. We haven't borrowed anything, right, on people's, you know, tax bills, right? So people haven't seen it, even though we passed it. So, you know, it's, it's, so there's, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot here, so.
There's a lot.
And especially, you know, relative to CPA-eligible projects as well, right? So that's, that's the thing, is there a way for us to kind of nibble away at some of this other stuff and then look at the, you know, some of the larger stuff? Maybe if we would need an override that was not for CPA-eligible or was not, there wasn't a funding source, if there's a way that we could do something smaller? I know that, you know, we want to get everything done, you know, as quickly as possible, but.
Yeah, I mean, this, I'm putting this out here for conversation purposes, right? There's a lot of projects.
That's great, nice job.
I think, you know, I'm trying to get everything out there so we can see
Yeah.
how we want to, you know, prioritize and fund things.
My only other question to Beth was, sorry, was, you know, on the, I know that we're going to talk about the Winchester High School Concrete Floor Repair. That's, that's a pretty, pretty big number.
Right.
Is there, you know?
Probably, Chris, probably having a heart attack seeing that number, but I don't think, I don't think there's any, there's, well, you've talked about your articles.
No, we're not talking about that.
Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know.
Not Chris, I'm just being wild.
Okay, well, I didn't know Chris was here.
No, but I think, as it's highlighted in red, it's a guess. I mean, and you guys, Chris and I think Jay would say that, you know, it could be, you know, 500 grand, it could be 4 million. They don't know yet. They're still gathering information, it's a guess, you know, just kind of like a placeholder at this point.
I guess my question is, I mean, have we, you know, had the conversation or made any traction? I know that we've had the conversation, you know, about, you know, some funds from the, you know, from the project. I mean, it's a new school to have to put.
I think the, I think they use the remaining project funds.
How about the high school?
For the initial study that was done, and I don't think there's any funds left.
Yeah, we funded that initial GH report and our remaining, and at that time, I think we had less than 160 left in the tank, so we're, we're getting down to, I think, around 100 grand left.
Yeah, no, I'm not necessarily looking for, you know, project money, but money from the, the general contractor on the project. I mean, we've had, I mean, it's a, this, I mean, is there, we can talk about it in another context.
This is in the old part of the school, right?
I would defer back to management to address that one.
Well, I think it's part of the conversation that's happening with the initial study that's being, right, that they're requesting $100,000 at fall town meeting, and part of that, I think, will be to identify whether there's potentially some warranty issues, or is this just, it's a 50-year-old building that we kept the existing concrete and now we're having to kind of make some repairs.
In other words, today, we don't see a connection, but if we move forward with Article 12, we may uncover something, and if we do, we will, we'll act on it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we made the choice to do the renovation project, and obviously somebody, you know, informed us that that would be okay, and, you know, I don't think that there's anything different that has happened, you know, since we opened the school to, with prior, but we can talk about it in another, another context, it's fine.
So I think from this board's standpoint, we need to kind of plot a course here. Do we want to nibble away at these projects, or do we want to, you know, make a dent in this list? Because escalating costs, and yes, they've leveled off, but they escalate every year, and, you know, certainly, the CPA will help, but it will help to a certain percentage. And can, you know, what will the cost be at that point in time? So I think from our standpoint, you know, I think there's things to pull out, you know, certainly numbers we can address, we can certainly get strategic in using ARPA capital stabilization funds for certain smaller projects, but at the end of the day, this, this list is growing, and, you know, there's items on here, there's items that aren't on here that will be on here in a year. And I guess Shore Road, for example, I'm sure when that bridge inspection's done, you know, that will be an emergency project. So I think we need to figure, I think that's the biggest question for us, is do we?
No nibbling. No nibble. You asked, do nibble or go big? And I was going to say, go big or go home. I mean, because we need it.
Yeah.
Before we have to game?
No, good.
You were like launching this like a John Volusia speech, and I was going with it, and I'm like, all right, that's good, but, you know.
No, I get it. I mean, you know, I'm looking at this list, and I'm saying, okay, well, downtown traffic, that's an $8 million project, I mean, maybe that's not, I mean, we list it as a medium priority, but, you know, maybe it's, it's not there. But, you know, that brings it down to about, you know, a 20, $29 million override, and I'm certainly thinking, you know, if there were two select board members that sat down with this list and kind of went to our stakeholders, school committee, capital planning, I think we could get a pretty solid list together, you know, but I think we have to be committed to that leap of, you know, something in the neighborhood of that number, or a number, versus this approach of nibbling, because I think, you know, and I don't want to speak for capital planning, but my guess is if, if we're going to nibble away at these things, they're not going to want to fund the design work. And, and, you know, I think that's unfortunate, I think it needs to be funded, because I think we only get to accurate numbers if we have this design work funded, but I can see, you know, the longstanding unofficial rule here is that we don't fund design work unless we have a funding source at town meeting, and I see you guys shaking your head over there, nodding yes. But, you know, something's got to give in this process, so it's up to this table to figure it out.
So I want to.
And I'll just say that if, of all these engineering studies that are proposed, if those are not funded, staff will be back next year making those exact same requests, because those projects are not going away.
The other thing about these projects is, in looking at this list, and, you know, this is, you know, a lot of it's building envelope work. I mean, we're talking about windows, we're talking about roofs, I mean, this isn't, you know, we're not trying to build wings on these buildings or additions or things like that. We're talking about basic necessities of building envelope and heating and cooling structures, so you have to address them eventually. It's not, it's not going to go away. So I'm with John, I think we have to take a leap. I would love it if that was the direction this board went, and I think, you know, we appoint two members to kind of, you know, go through the weeds in the next, you know, several weeks and come up with a number that we can put out to the voters at some point, whether it's the March election, whether it's a special election, whether it's, you know, a primary election, but I think this is part of the financial plan along with the CPA, and along with, you know, the work that, you know, Beth has identified long-term, that finance committee is interested in doing, and the budget process. I think it's all one big global financial plan for this town that's kind of been missing over the last, you know, five, seven, eight, 10 years, and kind of has put us into this position. So I can appreciate that the aspects of nibbling, but I just, I don't think we can do it anymore. I just think the list is growing, grown too big, and we have. And we have other bigger projects waiting in the wings. There's the talk of the Morocco School, there's the fire station. You know, so there's things not on this list that will crop up. So to me, I mean, I've been saying this, you know, this is nothing new for me, right? I mean, you guys heard this last, you know, on this committee, you heard this last year, you know, when we had our budget summits, I feel like I'm, you know, saying the same thing. But I, I think we have to do it this way.
So anyway, I think John and I agreed to work on a financial plan together, so sign me up for that. I don't know that we'll know in March, everything we need, if we even tried to fund the high, much we're going to know the costs of those things, right? So I think if we have four elections next year, no wonder we need poll workers. We have a CPA as one of those questions, right, ideally in November. So I, I'm, I'm happy to work with, so number one, I'll work with John on that ask of two board members, Rich, to do that. We want to come back with a number for a potential debt exclusion override. We need to be able to drill down on what is the real cost of some combination. But I'm not, I don't know that we just ask for the big number that we could probably use and we sure, we're sure we can spend without knowing exactly what we're getting and which projects we're funding. I know that's not what Beth's presentation says, oh, just, you know, 16 million, we'll figure it out later. I think we need to drill down and I think we need to look at what do we know the real price of? What do we estimate the real price of to make the case to voters if we want to have an override passed in the same year that we've run, we asked for a, a permanent assessment through the CPA? So I think, I'm not suggesting we nibble, I'm just suggesting we be very strategic on the size. If we're going to put two ballot questions to voters, either at one election or spread across two elections, the likelihood of one passing and one failing, it'd be, it'd be terrible to have them both fail, but it would be almost as bad to have one fail, one pass at the expense of another when we think both are key to our long-term capital funding plan. So.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that too, you know, the, the risk of the CPA failing, you know, is, is a horrible risk to us. We've, you know, when we've been looking at some of the numbers and how much that we've, you know, lost in state match, you know, since the last failed vote, it's, it's compelling. Yeah, it gets to, close to this number, right? So it's, you know, do you want the, you know, the, the, the golden egg or the, the golden goose, right? So the CPA is a, you know, it's, it's less money at once, but I think if we're, we're strategic about it, it can solve some of our problems. I don't think anybody here would say, I mean, describing, you know, planning some of this as nibbling, I don't think is, is, is a helpful, you know, narrative for us. I don't think anybody would say that we need to nibble and throw $100,000 here and $100,000 there. I think we know we've got some substantial priorities here. But our, we have, you know, ARPA funds, we have, you know, other strategies that we can use. I mean, it, it may be that we need a debt exclusion, maybe the number is, is 20, maybe it's 10, maybe it's 5. I don't, I don't know. But, but it's, it's, I think this is a good, a good start to the, to the conversation for us. You know, is my, is my sense.
But I guess to our, our stakeholders out there that are, you know, like I said, have this anxiety and they're, they're moving these articles forward, I mean, what, what do we, what is our deliverable here? I mean, and when is it? I mean, I, I understand, you know, if you're looking at the election calendar, we've got, you know, the March 26th Annual Election, you know, we do have a state primary in September. I'm not sure if you can put a debt exclusion override on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And I'm not sure the timing of that after kind of people coming back for the summer.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, realistically, what are we looking at for a calendar? I mean, I personally think we could do it for March. And I think there's certainly numbers that we could get, especially if some of the design work is funded at this Fall Town Meeting. You know, maybe it's a special election in June. I don't know. I mean, I hate to have five elections in here. I mean, that might kill us. But it's, you know, to the, to, to that, to those stakeholders, what is, what is the plan?
If we fund, we have 20 motions on the capital article, right, of which, you know, six or eight are design studies, we're going to have all of those results in hand in February to come up with, or in late January to come up with a number to put on a, a March ballot? I mean, maybe. But I, I don't quite under, I don't, not sure I accept the premise that if we don't commit to an override or a CPA or a nut of 4 to 20 million dollars, that capital's going to pull all of their engineering articles and not going to, not going to do them. I mean, A, they could, but you're asking Fall Town Meeting to, to fund a bunch of engineering studies. I don't hear anybody in the select board saying, no, let's not. I get that we don't want to, and we want to fund them with the hope of funding for the projects, absolutely. But I don't know that you can hold one hostage at the expense of the other. And we don't know on March 5th or March 26th that the number that we need for FY '26, high priority, top of the line, is truly 16 million or 12 or 10. So maybe we could do it in March, Rich, but I think if we're doing it in March, we're doing it with what we think are solid, hard and fast numbers, maybe with some buffer. But I don't know how quickly all these engineering studies can get done if we're approving articles on November, you know, 9th at the earliest, November 13th, November 16th.
We still have to wait till town meeting is over before that money's available.
People have to complete the studies, John and I need to consume the results, then we need to put it on a schedule, then we need to, just need to add it up. So. I, I mean, maybe Jim and Roger would say we're going to pull all the engineering and not vote on it in Fall Town Meeting, but I doubt that. But that's their call, and it's town meeting's call.
Well, I mean, already, already the Finance Committee has voted unfavorable action on most of this, on most of these articles.
And we've not voted.
And I know Capital's meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, you know, I mean, you guys can correct me, there's rumblings that you, you want to pull this stuff.
No, there aren't rumblings that we want to pull it. There are rumblings that we may reevaluate the nine projects of a little over a million dollars that we propose to do if there isn't a certain plan to do it within, within the next two calendar years. One of the concerns, and I'm speaking for myself, is that we have a couple of plans on the table in the city. Projects on the table are nice to be quote shovel-ready, but over a two or three-year plan, things drastically change. First of all, state specs may change of building specs. Additional deterioration on building wear, tear, weather may make some of those plans irrelevant or may make in a year or two have to have them re-analyzed and re-evaluated at an additional cost. So what we're going to talk about Wednesday, and it's a Zoom meeting, everybody's involved, is what do we want to do with proposed engineering plans? Obviously, some of them have to go forward. Obviously, some of them could be indefinitely postponed till the spring, till we get a better direction from this board. As you are aware, the Capital Committee has been asking for direction. We appreciate the time and effort you've put into this process because we know it's a very hard, very tough one. And there is no answer. You know, just, there is really no way to evaluate it. So we want to take a very prudent, very slow approach in evaluating spending a million dollars, up to a million dollars, that may be best to put indefinitely postponed some. And I emphasize some of these items into the future, probably into the spring. My assumption is, Beth has a much better engineering skills, that if we go forward in November, excuse me, by the time we close our town meeting, an RFP should be developed sometime in December. Given the holiday, that RFP probably could go out in January for a February bid opening. Bid opening after being awarded would be sometime in February, that maybe the engineering-architectural aspects of it could be done in the field. And it may or may not be a very rough idea. We do know generally that engineering costs are at least 10 to 20% more. The construction cost is about 20% more than the original engineering cost. And Beth, you know, confirmed that. We also know that there is approximately a 10% annual escalation in costs lately. That's what we're using, 8 to 10% to, on these projects going forward. So every year you push this out, you have a $4 million project, it's compounded by 10%. And we'd like to get them done, and the cost of money is getting expensive and labor. But we'll, you know, we'll make our recommendations and we'll work with anybody who wants to work with us to get these projects done because we realize that the, these are community assets. They're well-appreciated, well-used, and well-valued by the citizens.
Jim, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. And especially the timing of closed town meeting, issuing an RFP, get bidders, get a report. Deadline for a local ballot question for a March 26th election would be February 19th. Not likely to have a report by February 19th. Maybe.
So if I could just clarify that, for some, for some ways, we don't need to issue a RFP.
Right, some of them we know.
We can go straight to the consultant that we have that's done, you know, some of the preliminary work.
But it's pretty good estimates.
The estimates on the, on the second to last slide, the?
Maybe not the ones in red, but.
Well, so that's my question. The estimates in red, how close are we on?
Guess, guess. I mean, these are educated guesses, right? So this 1.6 number for Mystic School, that's an estimate that Pete Lawson put together as part of his request. That's an estimated guess, right? There's no engineering that's been done for that. The Bell Tower Structural Repairs, I have no idea. We, we put a dollar value of $2 million. I have no idea. We have $50,000 that we're funding at Fall Town Meeting to start that evaluation. Then there'll be an engineering process once we get our hands around what the scope is. Packer Ellis Tennis Courts, again, you know, we have $75,000 that's being funded at Fall Town Meeting. If that goes forward for preliminary engineering, there's a wall out there that may need to be replaced. There's other work that may need to be done. And until we have somebody go out there and really look at it, it's very challenging to put a number to that. Town Hall Window Replacement/Repair, again, we're looking at whether they, we can go with a repair or we need to do replacement.
But for this engineering work, do we need to do an RFP or is this just, you know, for tennis courts?
Not for all of it, yeah.
For example, I mean, tennis courts, you call up Chris Huntress.
Right, we, we started.
He goes out there and he does, I mean, you know, he turns that around within, you know, a matter of a few weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm hoping that we have a little bit of a, a strategy here. And that's why I asked, you know, when these projects came on as a request, right? Because typically when we go through the capital planning process, we see things that, you know, maybe something started in, you know, 2019 and it's, you know, we did some engineering or we did a study. And then by the time we come around to funding it, it's, you know, it, it's different. I mean, the tennis courts, I do feel like are, are a concern and maybe it's something that we can address in different phases. But I mean, that, that just, that just happened, right? I mean, that's just like, you know, so.
To be fair, I think it's been a request of the Recreation Department for a couple of years and just has, just has really, it's kind of at a critical point right now where there's some.
Where it's become an emergent issue, right? There's, it's always been a request as far as, you know, but it, it's only gotten worse because of the recent storm, right?
Roger and I went out and looked at it and it was worn out. It's just worn out.
Well, it's worse than that. I mean, I went out after you, after you guys went out.
The accessibility issues you have to address.
Yeah.
The seating ability you have to, yes, display issues you have to address, the transit issues you have to address. There's water irrigation issues that should be addressed. There's grading of certain areas. There's an awful lot of work on the initial that has to be evaluated and scoped out.
Oh, I, I 100% agree. It's just, you know, if we're, if we're, and certainly we should, you know, fund that engineering for it because it's, you know, I went out, I think a week or so after you guys went out and it was, there was a, a worse storm then. And it, so it, it's, if you go out there today, it's, it's, it's unsafe, really, a lot of it. It's, it's, but so maybe there's a phased way that we can, you know, we can address a big project like that so at least some of the initial improvements over a period of years can be funded. So it doesn't get neglected by just being too large of a request is my, is, that's, that's what I'm, I'm saying.
So looking at this list, there's about $17 million of, of items in the black. So I would assume that we have good numbers on those. So, you know, and then additionally, there's, you know, four and a half million for the high school floor and gym floor. Where, how close are we to?
I think Beth's number is a solid number, Rich. We've got two flooring options. We have two reconfiguration options. If you take the cheapest of those four, we're at 1.8. You take the richest option, you're at 2.2, 2.3. That's 2.5, you know, adds for some escalation depending upon bid it. I think that two and a half's a, a, a solid and conservative number for high school gym, Rich. But the, the concrete piece, as I understand it, that's really just more of a placeholder right now because we really need to get through that SGH study to, to know what we're into.
And what's the timeline for that, Chris?
Depends if, well, if town meeting will fund Article 12, we could get started on it right away. And we're hopeful that we will have some information prior to spring town meeting. Particularly, Rich, if there's some elements that have real urgency to, and there may be some. As you know, there's some work that's going to have to be done over the summer when kids are not in the building. But if there's some work that can be done in crawl spaces, because we don't have kids in the crawl spaces, I hope we don't, we could look into that in more detail.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So if Capital takes a look at this list and we don't have a, a mechanism or a plan or approach for funding it and punts some of these studies to next year, if we don't have the studies done, from the conversation that just came up, that punts this idea of, of override again. So like, at some point, I, I mean, it's either kicking the can down the road over and over and over again or needing to also figure out where we are in these estimates to be able to feel some level of comfort that we're in the right zone to know that we're fun, we're looking for an override of X amount of money that will fund this, 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 and this to a proposed dollar value. And so I, I think if we, if we need to have all the estimates in hand, I don't know if that we're ever going to, like, we're just going to be cyclical. I don't know we're ever going to reach the point that we can say we have a comprehensive package of things that we feel is appropriate for.
So my recommendation is that, and I would say this to Capital, they asked me, that we move forward with all of these engineering studies. I think there, it's all work that needs to be done. It's, these are not wants. These are, as Rich said, building envelope issues that, that need to be addressed. And so I would hope that we can fund these engineering studies and that those will feed into, in some, in some cases, we have no, no, no idea of what some of the, the future work will cost. The roofs, we at least had done a preliminary kind of evaluation, so we have some planning level costs. But we need this information to take that to the next step.
And I think Capital needs to hear from this group that, this is my personal opinion, that we're committed to, you know, we can get creative, certainly. But we're committed to, you know, putting forth a package of 20 to 30 million dollars and we can fine-tune it when we get these estimates. But there's a giant override coming in order to, to, to pick these off. Because I think what I'm hearing from Capital and the Finance Committee is without that, you know, we're, we're just kind of spinning our wheels. And, and, you know, we could just, you know, pay-as-you-go kind of product, you know, with this stuff. And it's just not going to work. So, I mean, I think that's what they're waiting to hear. And I just, I haven't heard that from this group.
Wait a second, no. I think we should fund these studies so we can make an intelligent decision and an intelligent presentation to, you know, citizens when we're asking them, you know, here's what we're basing our request on, our facts, not just, you know, 50% done plans that we know blow up and double or triple in cost and looks really dumb.
100%.
So, so I'm, maybe you haven't heard that and I just said it, but that's what I'm committed to. So we need that, you know, it's either the chicken or the egg. So we need the chicken, you guys are the chicken, so we can have the egg. So then we go, Michelle and I can do our thing. No, you don't agree?
No, I liked the chicken.
All right.
I was smiling at that.
No, but you don't, because how, how else are we going to figure out, you know, what's our priority and how to allocate resources without that?
I agree, but I think they need to hear that there's, there's that strategy coming from this board, that it's going to be, you know, a, a lump sum funding, you know. And I'm not saying that's the number. I'm saying that there's going to be a, a big number that we're going to put forward to, to get us over this, to get us out, over this hurdle.
Well, if we're interested in doing that, that's how we have to do it, right?
Yep.
Because just incremental pieces will not get us there. And we will just keep getting set back as, as the building envelopes deteriorate. The, the cost goes up, you know, you know, just explodes. So I'm, I'm for getting out in front of it and addressing as much as we can.
Others? I mean, I, you know, that's, that's two people.
Oh, I, I mean, if, if, if we need the information and these are the things that we have to do, then I would say, yeah, I mean, let's, let's fund the, the studies and engineering for what these requests are. I mean, that's what we're hearing from management. So I just don't know that there, if we're looking at, you know, being a little bit more strategic and saying, hey, our, you know, operating reserves are at 18%, right? So I think it's a little hard for us to then be, you know, you know, asking for a giant override when we're sitting there on higher operating reserves than, than, you know, than we need. I would use a little bit of that money for some of these projects. I would use some ARPA money for it.
ARPA money's going to be gone.
Yeah.
It's going to be totally gone, so we just take that off the table. And none of us are saying, don't be strategic.
Yep.
We're saying CPA, free cash.
Right, that's the story that we have to tell when we get the engineering back.
Absolutely, but we still could have, you know, a very substantial number that those will help fund a portion. But we still may need to ask for 20 or 25 or 30 million dollars. But until we do the research, we don't know what that ask is.
Well, that's my only problem is I just don't know what that number is without being strategic.
You don't need to know what the number is right now.
You just want a commitment that we're going to act on it. I'll speak myself on it.
Absolutely, I agree, yeah. I said, I agree if this is what management is saying that we need to do these studies and the engineering, then I think we're, you know, committing to doing those. I just don't know that work.
Right, but you're committing to the second part, which is to fund it. If we are priority list of 10 items that need to be done and we look at over a five-year period and it's going to be 20, we have to go for an override of 25 million dollars. And it makes sense, right? We've thoroughly vetted it. Michelle's done her job and I've signed off on it. Would you go for that?
Would I go for, I don't know, I'd have to see what the numbers are. But I mean, I would go for, it's hard, of course, if...
You've got to make a decision. It's going to be yes and no. We can't waffle all night.
But we haven't had any, we haven't had any of the information yet where, you know...
I know, but I think what Capital's saying is if you're going to waffle, which is fine, you can do that. We're going to take the million dollars back and we're just going to go pay as you go and try to bang out a project for a million dollars. Is that, they're shaking their head, yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the thing.
That's what I could use money.
I mean...
If we do that, we're never going to accomplish these projects because we're never going to have estimates and we're never going to...
Right, so they want a commitment from this table that we're not, we're going to change our approach. And I agree, there's not one person at this table that wants to spend a dollar more than we have to on an override. If we can get creative with the different sources that we've identified here, absolutely. Everyone wants that. But at the end of the day, there's a lump sum, you know, a big number that we're going to have to spend in the next, you know, two years, you know, on this stuff. And they want to know that, what should be their strategy? They're looking for guidance and they've been, you know, in fairness to them, they've been looking for it for about two years. Maybe two and a half, three, since I've been on this board. And we just haven't given it to them. And if I was them, I'd be in the same place. I would be doing exactly the same thing. Well, my million dollars is better spent doing a roof rather than funding all this engineering stuff that will, you know, maybe will never get done. If it does get done, it's going to be outdated. We're going to have to pay to update it anyways. So that's what they're looking for in order to meet tomorrow and put these articles on. And it's the same thing the Finance Committee is looking for, too. So it's got to come from this board. We have to give direction. We're the leaders on this stuff. We have to give them some direction. And I'm not asking you to commit to a number tonight. All I'm asking you to do is to commit to that strategy. So, and I think that's Town Manager's recommendation.
We're not, it doesn't have to be mutually exclusive.
No.
We need both of them, so, and we're going to present it that way.
Well, that's my question, right? Is that, you know, it seems like we're taking a lot of the CPA stuff and we're putting it here.
I fact know the CPA can fund all those things. I think that they're so big, so that's, we're saying they have to go together.
The CPA can't. When we're looking at playgrounds and we're looking at things for, you know, the outdoor recreation and we're looking for, you know, historic, you know, assets and things like that, then, you know, that's part of our plan. And it's not, so I just, I'm not ready to commit to 20 million dollars because I haven't seen the number. That's the only thing.
Right.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to fund, as I keep saying, I'm happy to fund this with a commitment to fund all of these projects that we are, you know, doing engineering and we're doing studies on. So I just don't know what that number is.
So we take an example from our CPA of at 1%, then this is how much we get in the first year and this is how much we could reasonably expect it to make an impact in using it directly or bonding. So that's like one way that we can articulate what, how the CPA would actually fit into this is how much impact is it going to have as of July? Real years, fiscal years, capital years, I don't know when that is, but July of 2026 calendar year.
So correct me if I'm wrong, CPA, we collect, you know, it's available for FY '25 for appropriation. It has to go to a committee and there's certain buckets you need to put a percentage in for each thing. I don't know what those percentages are.
10%.
10% for each?
Minimum.
Minimum?
It's a minimum, right.
So, you know, how it fits in is up to that committee. It fits in. There's no question about it. There's no question we need the CPA in this town and it's long overdue to your point. But it's not going to be the answer and I think everyone recognizes that. So it's part of this exercise is to see how it fits in and how we can be creative about it. But at the end of the day, you can slice and dice any way you want to. There's going to be a big number and it's time for people to step up and do it. I'm just tired of listening to these two, to be quite honest with you. I just am. I mean, it's three years of this and we just, we're not making progress. We're going in the reverse direction because more projects are coming online that we need to get done and costs are escalating. And, you know, these are escalations that we think we, you know, we understand and control. Add in a global crisis or anything like that, you know, all bets are off. So, you know, we, again, they're looking for, you know, a commitment on a strategy here. Not that we'll just fund, you know, that we support funding design stuff. We've already said that, okay? We've already gone down that path. What they're looking for is that if we do this design work, there is light at the end of the tunnel that these projects will get funded one way or the other. And if it includes a debt exclusion override, you're on board to do that.
So can we make a motion that will support, that will, these guys, these two, will, whatever they volunteered to do about an hour ago, will identify what are appropriate costs for a capital override and we will also look at free cash and appropriation of free cash to capital to reduce the cost of the override.
Yeah.
So how about something like this? We say, the information that's available by 5/1/24, within 60 days, we will have thoroughly vetted it and have a list of options available for FinCom and Capital and the Select Board to review. Just so we have some dates, we can drive the engineering to those dates and then we have a performance metric we have to meet.
Okay, and what would be the, what is the deliverable of that performance metric?
The deliverable is if we agree on a list of, you know, the top 20 projects or whatever. We have the cost vetted. We have talked to different stakeholders and we have a ranking done and we have the basis for that ranking behind there. And then, I don't know, it's too much to say that we'll have some, but it may not be, some financing solutions, proposals, options, looking out one, two, and three years.
So if I understand you, we use May 1st, that's no, but I'm going to try to. We use May 1st, 2024 as a cutoff date. We'll take, you know, whatever engineering information we have at that time. You will complete your analysis within 60 days and present a package
For vacation.
to this board, whether it's ARPA, CPA, free cash, whatever the funding source is, a debt exclusion override, but a package to address, you know, if not all, most of the money, money that we spent on design work for projects within the next two fiscal years, two or three fiscal years.
I think it's a more reasonable timeframe to get study information in. I'm not trying to push it out too far, but just something reasonable. Otherwise, we'll set these ridiculous goals and blow off.
No, I mean, I think it's helpful to have a timeline. I mean, I think that...
Michelle, you go with that. It's work. amended, I don't care.
So is that, that is then looking potentially at an override in the spring of 2025?
It's the beginning of Spring Town Meeting, so maybe May 15th would be better.
But you want to present it at Spring Town Meeting.
Yeah, I just ginned it up this morning. May something. Yeah, I'm good with that. I'm totally good with that. We'll just pick the day in May.
So May is 24.
So what, I guess, yeah.
You guys are going to come up with that.
So the issue, I guess then the next question is, so when do you put it out to voters? Like, what would be the, I mean, because, you know, there's two ways to do this. One, you could have, you know, you would want Spring Town Meeting to vote on it. Or you would want, you know, or you do the reverse. You have the voters vote on it and then Town Meeting votes on it after. So what, you know, looking at the timeline here and, you know, remember the CPA, and this is what we talked about last year, is this, you know, you're butting up against, you know, a CPA vote and two asks. So you could package it together as saying, this is our financial plan. We need both. And I think, you know, we do, but, you know, from a strategic...
I just think we could give a credible report much before that.
Yeah, I mean, I do too, but...
I know, but just...
So either fall of '24 or spring of '25.
I think you're waiting too long.
Can we...
We want to have the, I mean...
If we have information by, I mean, April 15th, but I mean, Town Meeting starts the last Monday in April. I don't know. John and I will act on what we can, but we're not going to try to piecemeal like we have three studies and we're waiting on four studies. So hey, Spring Town Meeting, here's 60% of what we know. Let's see what we get.
Well, why don't we, I mean, we can keep putting this on the agenda for updates. And stuff becomes available.
Yep.
Yep.
My wife just texted me saying, she says, great miracle she's figured out Halloween plans before I figured out this capital plan.
But just...
We've got Halloween covered at this point. If we could just get this done, that would be complete.
I think we're good.
I like that.
But can we also, like, if we're looking at not, we need to wait until, and this is, actually, this is a question towards the capital process. If we were to, we could appropriate free cash in Fall Town Meeting to some of these projects and then have...
Appropriate free cash at Spring Town Meeting.
Yes.
I think that's more likely.
It is Fall Town Meeting right now, coming up. Right, so Spring Town Meeting is in March.
You could do it in spring of '24.
24 appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, any of those.
So I just think that it feels like part of this discussion is also our discussion of the 18.6% that we have and how that can also, because if we're looking at an override in spring of 2025, we're past this big column of projects that got pushed off, right?
Yeah, and I think there's a couple of things we have to think about. So you have to look at how you're going to package these projects for bidding, right? So we don't want to like just do one roof and bid that separately. We want to bid a package of roofs together because we'll get a better price overall. And then the other piece of it is we have to look at this in the overall town long-term operating override possibility at some point on the horizon, right? So as we go through this next budget cycle, we'll develop those next three-year models. And hopefully, you know, we'll see that we're able to get through another few years without an operating override. But part of that has, it has to be part of the conversation. I think that's where the free cash comes in, right? Because we do use the free cash to kind of help us offset and delay those operating overrides for a longer period of time.
Right, that's why it's helpful to have that information because, you know, if you're using free cash, you know, then you're just, you may be holding off a couple of capital projects, but then you're just accelerating operating override. So we just, we just need that financial plan to see, you know, how that balance, you know, is, you know, really affects our plan.
So let's use May 1st as kind of a drop dead deadline. But let's have these types of conversations, you know, at least once a month.
Not sure.
We'll just clear the agenda. We'll just do this. That's all we're going to do.
Well, I agree. We should do this every single, yeah, I agree. That's how it's going to be done.
But starting in December, you know, middle of December, let's, you know, let's have an initial conversation. Maybe the timeline gets fine tuned once Fall Town Meeting's ended and, you know, management has a chance to figure out when engineering can get done and things like that. But let's, but we need to signal to our stakeholders out there that, you know, we're committed to this, you know, to getting us over this hurdle with some type of, you know, big number. Or they're just going to go the other way. I mean...
Do you feel like you have, maybe not everything you need from us, but more than what you walked in with? I know. That's why I asked it that way.
I would like a vote in this, but I mean, it's going in the right direction. I would like a vote in the fall, 60 days after the information or so is available, that we have a vote in the early fall. So we can do some comprehensive planning over the next year and a half, two years because these are long-term projects. Roger, you want to say something?
I guess I'd like to see something move forward faster. I'm sorry. I don't think we have to get to 100% bid package to have good understanding of what our costs are actually going to be. So, you know, we don't have to get to May to understand what some of these engineering estimates are actually going to be. The thing that concerns me is some of these projects are, as has been pointed out, envelope project, envelope problems that have been known for some time. And we may need to move forward on some of these things like McCall Roof before the timelines that you're talking about. So, you know, it'd be nice if we got all this wrapped up in a nice big bow and we could all present it and look at it, but that's not the world that we live in. We have to move forward on some of these things. And that's why we're saying, if we don't see some real commitment, if we don't, I mean, as Jimmy says, it sounds like you're moving in the right direction, but it needs to be sooner. I'm sorry.
I think, Roger, the problem I have is that so often we're going in with plans that are 50 or 70% done and then the project comes out to be 25% more, 30% more than we expected. And then we have to explain why we're back for, it's 30% more. And so then you lose credibility. You're like a little kid and you're like, well, sorry, but it's going to be different this time. Is it really going to be different? No, it's not. I'm going to keep coming in with 70% complete plans and be, you know, the estimates can be way low. So I'd rather commit with credible numbers. Now, if we can do that sooner, we would, or if we can get more comfortable with these numbers through conversations to you guys or consultants, then we're happy to do that. We just wanted to have some kind of, and I don't know really how much more of a commitment we can make than other than say, we're going to do our due diligence as quickly as we can and then we're going to commit to funding that. Like, if I'm you guys, like, okay, you told me you're going to do your homework and then you're going to fund it. If that funding isn't override, if it's CPA, if it's free cash, if it's, you know, whatever those sources are, we're going to go identify them and get the money. I can't do better than that. I don't know if there's a better answer. You know, maybe we make it, you know, March 1st and we have our report done by May. That could be, you know, again, we're going to have to report every month on what progress we've made in the previous four weeks.
I think our goal should be to have something to present to Spring Town Meeting. I think it's achievable.
An update of some type.
Fine.
Can I make a brief observation, Rich?
Yes.
And I appreciate John's concern about projects that do come in more expensive than we expected. But we do have major projects that come under budget as well. McCall facade restoration came in under budget. Morocco, all the work we've done in Morocco with the boilers, the roof, the electrical, also under budget. The McCall Ewing expansion was under budget. So when you look at a long list of projects, they're going to be maybe a third that we hit right on. There's going to be a third that come in high and a third that come in low. It's just sort of the nature of the beast. And the other thing I would say is the cost consultants that engineering and planning generally works with are very solid and they are a good judge of the completeness of drawings. And so if they feel like the drawings are only halfway done, they'll be pretty smart about how they want to sort of pad that, you know, with a contingency. But it's just not realistic that we're going to get accurate numbers on everything because sometimes we're high, sometimes we're low. And that's kind of been our tradition here for a while, so we'll go in on everything.
You know, Chris, I agree and we talked about it earlier at another meeting is to look at the last five years and see what the engineering estimate was and then see where it cost. And then say, okay, this is our variance for the last five years because that's probably a better judge than the five years before that. And I think that's one of the things that we'll look at when we put our analysis together.
Just not to belabor the point, but some of it also depends on the permitting that's required. So with these types of building projects, right, you go straight from architect engineering to building permit. And where we get hung up are like bridge projects or other projects where we have to go to DEP and we have a Chapter 91 license and it takes 18 months to get our license approved where we, you know, we budgeted or we scheduled nine months for that review. And that's the type of stuff that, especially in the bidding environment that we're in today, that a two-year delay can, you know, bring your project costs up by 25 to 30%, right? That's the part that is more challenging. These projects, I don't want to say are easier, but building projects are a little bit easier to get from engineering to construction than those infrastructure, other infrastructure projects.
So let's have a real update in mid-December and see, and set a better timeline. I think we should aim to present something to Spring Town Meeting. So I think that should be our goal.
What's that, Roger? Spring Town Meeting? Better? Getting warm?
It's better.
Fall Town Meeting is next week, so that's, I don't know.
We're not going to, it's not going to be presented then.
Yeah.
I think we should push ourselves and see where we land. If we get there, we get there. We don't, we don't. But I think that's, you know, as soon as possible.
John will do all the work. It's fine.
Absolutely. You'll sign off.
And I think then if we do present it to Spring Town Meeting, then, you know, maybe we're looking at an override, you know, somewhere before the summer. That's kind of aggressive.
Is there, like, we're working with the Collins Center on Communications. Is there someone who we can also consult with on time? We have, what, four elections next year, right? I mean, it's like, why not make it fun? But, so is there someone who we can, like, who can advise us also on, as elections plan out? Like, the, the CBC has sort of provided their, their feedback on as CPA elections go, they really recommend, um, presidential elections as, as the most successful. But, so knowing that that's happening and just figuring out what's the, you know, most appropriate timeline from a, communications and messaging and, and that type of standpoint.
I think for a project like this where you have many, you're packaging many little projects, it's about having a diverse enough project base where you're pulling in a wide variety of people who are interested in supporting those items that you have. There's probably not a lot of people who just come out for an eight million dollar town hall HVAC override if we just put that one item out as a dead exclusion override. But school roofs, recreation projects, pickleball, we're, we'll be good, right?
I think it's part of the process to figure out. So let's, let's plan on that.
Yep.
Mid-December.
Sure.
We'll, uh, we'll have another update.
Set them too.
And that mid-December update will be, will be what? I mean, what, I, I don't know.
I mean, we'll basically have just finished town meeting, funds will be ready five days after town meeting closes, we'll have.
Trust me, you're gonna like it.
An update about what consultants we have, you know, we have.
We'll tell you the approach we're using.
I'm sure you could have at least a preliminary conversation with the consultants and see what their timeline is to getting this work done at that point. Uh, and we may have some more information available, uh, and we may be pleasantly surprised, we may be, you know, frustrated, but we'll have at least a little bit more information, I mean.
But you'll be both.
Sure we will. It's even the name of the game here. Um, so, you know, I think that's a reasonable ask. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Next.
Page two.
It's two.
All right. I've got all night, guys. Uh, Lynch Solar update. So, who's here for this? Jay, Chris?
We had to answer questions.
Michelle?
To give, I guess.
So, we voted on this last meeting, and I think as soon as, you know, the meeting ended, there was a wrinkle. So, here we are again. Thank you, Roger, thank you, Jimmy, for being here.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, guys. Beth has more slides, I, just when I turn my chair, I'm like, nope.
It's just the same information that went out in the package. So, um, as was requested, uh, we hired a, um, cost estimator to basically reestimate the hundred percent plans. Uh, the hun- as we've discussed, the hundred percent plans include three alternates related to the solar piece. So they provided cost estimates for each of those. Um, originally, we were working with a number around three point one million dollars. That number came in higher, uh, as part of the cost estimates, I think closer to three, three-six, three-five, three-six.
Three-fives, yeah.
Somewhere in that range. Um, there was a meeting Friday, which I unfortunately couldn't attend with the, everybody at that end of the table, the cost estimator. So I don't know if there's anything you want to share from that, um, conversation.
So, we have, I mean, we don't have the PPA sort of side of things on this anymore, but we just have the, the borrowing with a new three point five ceiling, or it was three point one million two weeks ago. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars in free cash that takes you down to three point two. Numbers get a little bit more red after twenty years than they did at a lower borrowing. Um, the changes in Jay and Chris are gonna help me with what's different from when we voted two weeks ago. We have a hundred percent drawings, we have some different assumptions on materials and costs. Um, there's some additional sort of construction costs that are part of it that were not in the ninety percent design. Um, Beth Greenblatt looked at it and kind of pushed back on some assumptions. There was a, uh, what, three hundred thousand dollar error in there that kind of, the initial Thursday update was even more frightening than Friday. I assume we, we assume they.
Excuse me, Michelle, this, this is my point, is that ninety percent to a hundred, was a twenty percent difference in, in cost, so that's why I'm a little more reticent, Chris.
Five minutes ago, yes. So, once we fix the error, and.
I have it.
It's ten o'clock, it's ten o'clock.
Two, I can't go for yet.
I'm bringing up every time.
One trade, I didn't even own one project, but yes.
Point taken.
So Jay and Chris, if you want to add more context to that.
I think, uh, you, you hit it, I mean, we did have multiple conversations with the cost estimator, then we had one altogether. Uh, went line item for line item, the three point five comes out of, uh, it was three point six. After taking both estimates, the ninety and the one hundred, and I went line item for line item, there was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that they moved from base bid of the school into the, um, add alternate. So, that's why we're using that lower number, because it, it, it's gonna get paid really out of the add alternate, so the base went down by that amount. They did find an error after, I mean, they, they're probably not used to be in question so much. And they went line item for line item also, and they found an error on their side. Uh, but most of it chalks up to just having a hundred percent drawings. And there is still, um, I hate to say it, but they did carry a ten percent on the electrical item only. Because, I mean, they, they worked their cost estimates off trending. They bid it, and then they watch how the results come in, and they, and they trend that way. They can't get a clear trend on the electrical line item. It's going all over the board on the solar and the, and the electrical. The rest of the items, they're pretty clear on, and they, they held to those numbers, but they did carry, uh, so in that number is about two hundred and fifty thousand of an allowance, just because they're, they're unsure of the electrical line item, so.
Which they called O and P originally, right?
Yeah, they did, and then he said that, that's why he's doing it, is because he can't get a clear read.
Uh, yeah.
They work on feedback from after the bid openings, and, um, that's just one line item that's all over the place as to how the bids come in. So.
Is that because of cost components, or is it labor, or is it?
Uh, cost components, the, the actual contractor doing the job, is it a smaller job with a smaller contractor versus a larger school that they're trending? Um, and mostly components, what's available at the time they need it.
Right.
Um, something with the solar panels, they're not gonna take delivery until, you know, uh, spring of twenty-five to go on the roof. So they're really, it's not like we can store them on site. Uh, so they're, they're really pushing themselves out on something like that.
Is that a commodity type of product?
It is.
Okay.
And, uh, and the commodity part of it is that you need X amount of these panels, and they all have to be the same brand, they all have to talk to each other. So if one manufacturer can only do three quarters of it, he's out of the bidding process. And then someone else is in it that could do the whole job, but he's, you're locking him up to take delivery of that product, lock it in and, and save it for two years or a year and a half.
So when you, when you buy up this job, right, do you buy out with, uh, panels for like a five percent surplus, like you do with ceiling tiles? Because you, should you?
Do you really count on panels, because they're, that extra five percent is useless to anyone else, because you're kind of to match, uh, so.
Right, so.
I mean, you need like attic stock, like.
Well, you know, if you break ceiling tiles, the colors change, right? So if, if, what Jay's saying, they're all, they have to be the same kind, kind of unit. So if you have two or three percent fail, you do the same thing with floor tiles and anything else.
It's not done with the solar, because it's really something you can't store. If, you know, when one fails, you take it up, right, nowadays, it's changed a lot since ten years where you lose half a system. Now, you go into a program, you take that one panel off the line, and, uh, you lose that one panel while you order one and have one made as a replacement to, to replace that. It might be three months down the road.
Yep.
But, um, there's no place to store something like a panel or something like that.
So the results, did this, this didn't change the PPA analysis at all, right?
Uh, they didn't rerun the PPA.
Yeah, we didn't have a rerun anything really to the PPA.
Okay. So, if I, I understand the PPA, the twenty-year net present value of four percent was negative two ninety, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Twenty-five is negative two hundred and sixteen thousand. And then we have these numbers, sorry, you want?
Can I go back to that?
Yeah, that one. So you got negative three thirty-six and five eighty-seven, and three sixty-six and six seventeen. Right? Okay.
Yep. So.
Am I missing anything?
Well, I think that you're not missing anything with what you have. I think if we ran the PPA numbers, I think that net present value would also kind of balloon in that we would expect some additional cost on the PPA side.
Right.
Of things, so incrementally, if, so I think that same trend, Rich, before they were in the two fifty and two seventy range with the red brackets. So they might be in the three thirty and three fifteen range, I imagine, with the PPA. It's not that the cost is not gonna be saved on the PPA side, because it's gonna pass it back on to us. So we can ask Beth to, to run that, because certainly we'd need that, I think, for Article, uh, nineteen. But for tonight, I think we need to just decide if the vote that we took, we need to change the motion to put a different amount in for town meeting, and does that change anything at this table? But you don't have, you don't have the right side-by-side, because we didn't ask Beth to do the PPA, because it was Friday morning, we were all trying to consume this, and then Jay did more math, and here we are on Monday.
And there's, one of the alternate, add alternates would be, need to be done under the PPA, is that correct?
Yes, the, the four ninety, the, the one that's almost five hundred thousand dollars regardless, that doesn't change.
Foundation and conduit entry.
And that didn't go up.
The one.
No.
So it's going on.
The one thirty-eight would be required.
Yep.
Right.
That's what we want to do under the base.
Right, but the foundations, if Select was selected, they indicated they would do their own, they wanted to do their own foundation.
I would hope, uh, you know, that the bids come in good enough that we can take one and two with no question.
That would be great.
And then, uh, it doesn't interfere with the project at all, and then we can work on the rest if that was the case. But, um, and I, and just from, like I said, rerunning the numbers, alternate number two should fall into the, it's really items that were taken out of the base. So i- if the trend, if the estimate is anywhere near correct, alternate number two should be accepted with the project, because that money was really in the base to begin with.
Yep.
And alternate one, did it come in around what you expected?
He didn't rerun that, we only hired him to rerun the three.
Yeah, okay.
So three and four, four is really what changed, where it changed the most.
Yeah, I think alternate one is minor anyways.
So the railings.
Alternate one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the railing.
The bridge railing.
Installation and.
So just if you, you have to take alternates in order, so in order to get to alternates two, you have to buy out alternates.
So if I understand correctly, the real change is alternate four.
Yes.
Which really only pertains to.
The panels.
Direct ownership, though. Alternate four doesn't come into play in terms of a PPA, right? Are you saying there's more costs, there's additional costs that we have to be factored into the PPA? And I just don't see where those are.
Well, rightfully, the PPA should rerun to these numbers, but they've never re- rarely run a true estimate. They're just using a squiff, a per watt number, so they've never opened the drawings and bid the job. So the PPA numbers that we're running, so Beth is basically taking a number we're giving her and running it with the PPA values, because they never really did their own, their right estimate.
Okay. What do you guys want to do?
So what do you think needs to be changed with the, with the motion, Michelle?
The motion needs to go from three point one, which was the total amount, now needs to go to three point five, less three hundred thousand dollars in free cash. So.
Okay.
It becomes a borrowing of three point two million versus a borrowing of two point eight million. That's the motion. So we just have to change the words, that three point five million is appropriated to pay for engineering costs, three hundred thousand from free cash, and then the balance to borrow is three point two million.
And would we want to increase the free cash appropriation at all as well, or no?
That's something we could do.
We made that five hundred and then.
Yes, but given the conversation just had on capital, I'm not sure I want to go up on that free cash number. But you can make a motion, you were successful with certifier tonight, Mike.
Yeah, but that was really dicey, I wasn't confident about that, so.
I mean, I think you guys know where I stand on this, I, I just think the numbers are way too speculative at this point. I mean, I think, if we were seriously considering a direct purchase, which, you know, I think makes sense to do, I think we almost need to do the, the legwork, uh, you know, the alternates that need to get done in order to have that stuff put in. Um, but, you know, delay on deciding the ultimate decision here. Um, until we have, you know, the bid openings or some, some additional numbers, because I think there's a lot of assumptions uh, in these numbers. I mean, I've, I mean, Ken's here, I mean, there's an email he sent out that says it could be one point eight million dollars. I mean, so, I mean, it's, I just, I just don't know, I mean, I feel like we're comparing apples and oranges and bananas here in this stuff. And it's, it's frustrating to sit here and have to make a decision. Uh, and if I'm confused by it, I can't imagine what town meeting's gonna do and how they're gonna act to it. But that's just me, if you guys feel confident on this, um, then, you know, go ahead. But I, I just, I don't know. I think it's gonna be, uh, I think we gotta be prepared, um, Michelle, and to really explain this, because I think people are gonna have a lot of questions.
Well, I, I don't know that we have, if we, this is a question maybe for Chris and he had PBC and Jay. Could we go up through alternate, add alternate three and take alternate four in terms of purchasing panels and take that up in May after you have bids?
No, you can't buy out the alternate at a later date, you could do it as a change order.
Change order, yeah.
And then you'd be, they would, but it wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to.
It would be negotiated.
Get, take their price, yeah.
But just to add to that, uh, if we take alternate two and three, it doesn't even have to be a change order to the job, because it no longer affects the project. It could be a separate bid, but put off until, uh, May, June of twenty-five, so they don't.
To, 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 for the solar panel piece.
For the solar panels, but nothing would, nothing would have to be a change order to the original contractor. It could be its own bid, it could be someone like Select come in, or another company that wants to work with what was pre-done and do their own thing without interrupting anything to do with the project, and come in May or June of twenty-five and be done all summer and, and, and do that.
I think the only, the only question is, because Select brought this up, is, you know, some companies might want to install the foundations, because there's a warranty piece with the whole system, whether they would.
I, I think they, I, I really don't follow their reasoning on that. We're an engineer, designed this whole system, the whole canopy system, and we're, we're putting it out to bid what we've designed. It's like building the school.
Right.
And a contractor comes in, they don't like to steal on the school and they're gonna do their own, it, it doesn't make sense what they were saying.
We could provide as-built and all sorts of documentation along the way, Beth. Uh, I, I was saying this to Jay, was it yesterday or today, that the, the board should just maybe reflect on this, that if, if the goal is to be at net zero and there's a real interest in purchasing, um, I would suggest to you, it doesn't all have to be there on the day that the school opens. If, if, if there is some consideration towards postponing for purchasing of panels, that's the important thing, is getting that done. That coordination, being able to afford it. If, if the panels are installed and everything goes live three or four months after the building opened for kids, so what? We got a great new building and it's net zero. So, just sort of be thinking about, what are your criteria for judging what success looks like, right?
In the same way, if we indefinitely postpone this, we could indefinitely postpone nineteen as well, wouldn't have to sign a power person agreement. This, wouldn't have to decide this fall town meeting about a PPA either.
If we get one, two and three accepted.
Yes.
Yeah, that, we have to get, we have to at least get enough money for two and three, yeah.
And does the, sorry, Chris, does the, um, the supplemental MSBA funding that you just approved, does that impact our, you know, spending on the project or not, I know.
It doesn't, um, I will share with you, I got a phone call from a couple of directors at the MSBA today at five thirty, um, which was very nice of them to call me, just to, just to confirm our understanding that the supplemental, so the, the board voted last week. Some, it, it, this is like Groundhog Day, they just did last week what they did in January. They, it, they raised the construction cost cap per square foot. However, our reimbursement rate is unchanged, still thirty-six point two-one percent of eligible expenses. We have many ineligible expenses on the project. What they voted does not change the project budget or scope. What it means is every time we send in an invoice, we're gonna get incrementally a little more reimbursement back. So that by the time the project is closed out, which will be after September of twenty twenty-five, we will have brought in, uh, some extra money from the MSBA, which means it's not tied up in a twenty-year long-term bond, which is good news. But it, what it isn't is, we're giving you several million dollars that you can now sort of spend as you wish.
It's not a fusion of new cash.
It's not.
It's a reduction of borrowing.
Borrowing, right. Hundred percent correct, yes.
Right, but that's, I mean, that's, we can say that's pretty good, though, right?
It is, it's great.
Right, okay.
It's great.
It's great.
Just, just as we're looking on, you know, taking other, you know, um, you know, things like direct purchase on and stuff like that, I think it's.
It is great, Mike, and, but I would just also caution, because there's some different numbers that are being thrown around, given the vote last week.
I, I know, yep.
Um, it, I was hopeful that we might have a revised, uh, PFA in time for opening of town meeting next week. And that is not gonna happen, there's, it's a very detailed process. We are one of thirty-nine or forty projects impacted by the board vote. So, it's gonna be a while before we can say with confidence what, right now, if you go to the project website, our map, our facility's grant is between nineteen point nine to twenty point three million dollars. That's gonna go up, but we can't tell you with certainty how much that's gonna go up yet. But it's gonna go up, and it is great news, and as soon as we figure it out, we'll share it.
So we could fund our, uh, alternates two and three with our money. So we could fund our, uh, alternates two and three with ARPA money, right? Is that what we talked about last week?
Two was in the base and three we could do with ARPA.
I'm not sure we could fund the foundations with ARPA.
Thought we could.
I thought, I thought she said we could.
She said we could.
Yeah.
Beth did, yeah.
Yeah, we could do three with ARPA.
Well, that's right, she said you could, but not the canopies themselves, right?
Correct. And actually, it wasn't Beth.
And if the project comes in under budget, then that doesn't even need to be an issue. It's always possible that the project, the base bid comes in under budget so that we can afford the alternate. That's what happened on VO, we did that lower level shelf space. We picked up all that space for extra classrooms because it came in under budget.
We're going to know that by the end of November?
We'll know it on seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
It's coming.
I mean, I would be inclined to fund, you know, see what the bids were and if we need to fund that with ARPA money and figure this out with actual real numbers that we can run a real analysis with. That's my vote. You spent an hour, an hour and a half talking about capital and how we need to get real numbers in order to put together an override package, so, but.
So you would fund the alternates with, uh, or with, with ARPA?
If it wasn't under budget and we needed money, I would fund alternate three with ARPA money.
And postpone four.
And put four on.
Panels.
Yeah, postpone panels.
Be a PPA ownership or something.
Correct.
Later.
I mean, they are bidding it, so it would be like a false bid of alternate four, if there's no money behind it to accept it. And we're too late to change, you know.
Whatever you guys want.
The chance is going to come in better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, kicking the can down the road is also a risk.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, maybe you could stay with your original number. And so if it did come in under, uh, you know, you funded the two, you could, you could still go with your original motion. You know, we're going on the process.
I think the sense of the board is you still want to move forward with direct purchase. You're better to go with, it's just a borrowing authorization, we do not have to borrow up to that limit if it comes in less. But if that's the direction the board is interested in going, then I think increasing the, the numbers to match what our cost estimates are. So you can say that at town meeting, we have this cost estimate and that's how these numbers tie.
I have those five great slides, I got to use them, right?
Just, sorry, do you have the, um, this analysis from, when would be the appropriate previous analysis to look at?
The one from last week.
Ten seventeen?
Ten seventeen.
Ten thirteen-ish.
So I see one from the, that's dated October eleventh.
Oh, yeah, that's close to ten thirteen.
Is that, but.
Probably.
I have October sixteen.
Changes when the wind blows, so.
Jay, how many rooms you got, forty-two? That's not even funny.
I know.
I mean, when looking at it from October eleven, it's like this is drastically.
I would look at, I would use the October sixteenth numbers. They were updated after, they got more information on it October sixteenth.
It's what Beth presented at the meeting on the sixteenth.
Yep.
I'm just not finding it.
Here, you can have this. Ken, you got anything to add over there?
We've been here a while. The only thing that crossed my mind since, since you asked, um, is just that one approach could be where you just were now, which is to essentially, um, get borrowing authority from town meeting for a certain amount, um, the, the, the amount that you were going to go with last time. Um, and, you know, just hope that the, in fact, that the bids come in at that amount or lower. Um, you know, for, I, I, you know, I'm not a cost estimator, I'm not exactly sure why the numbers came in so high. On a per watt basis, they're grossly higher than a lot of what's getting built. Um, you know, spoke with Jay this morning, we talked about different numbers and even his, you know, higher numbers, given the large canopy, um, foundations that have been put in, which are very expensive, still came in, you know, you were saying around.
I, I took, I went in and, uh, today after talking to Ken, went back and pulled estimates we've done, and ran my own numbers, uh, just to an allowance in for the rate, which I don't do rate. And I was at two point eight six million, but you'd have to put a, a markup for the general contractor, which would be anywhere from six to ten percent. So that would be a hundred and seventy to two hundred and eighty-six thousand on top of that. And that's still a guess at the prevailing wages, yeah. So, um, just take, going back and, and running those. So I, I, I still think we're in that three, one to, you know, if you take off the two hundred and fifty that they put in there, it's still in that number. And with a change order, it could go either, either way. They're either going to go for extra on the change order or not, and we just need to be prepared to say, you know, it's not the right number and we're not going to do alternate four. Or it came in great, but, and have the ability to, to take it if it, if it's a good number at that point.
The two fifty being that ten percent.
That they're, that, you know, he, we, we talked to him in depth and he's just, they're not willing to give that back, uh,
Yep.
Uh, just from what they're seeing. I mean, already, uh, not to throw it off, but Newton opened last week and they had a low bidder that's extremely low. Uh, and two, two bids that are right on the budget and one that's, so they're waiting to see if they're pulling out or not. Uh, so that, that's just the way the, the, the numbers are going, um, so.
And, and alternates are always more volatile than the base bid is, so.
So I think the best point, you could always borrow less, but you need to have enough money, so if you want to go to direct purchase.
So three, five is what you think, that would be it, okay.
Yep.
So we need to amend the motion for Article eighteen to be borrowing authorization for three point five million.
Three point.
Sorry.
Well, yeah.
Assuming that you want to stick to the same formula you had last time.
It's when you say three hundred thousand free cash.
Yep.
So if you look at, the first line would be moved in second in that, instead of three point one, three point five million is appropriated.
Right.
Of which three hundred thousand is from free cash and three point two is borrowing.
Okay.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we, um, amend, uh, the Article eighteen motion to, um, say, move in second that three point five million is appropriated to pay cost of engineering, acquisition, installation of solar panels, et cetera. Um, and, uh, three hundred thousand dollars would be transferred from free cash. An estimated borrowing is, uh, three point one, is that what you said?
Three point two.
Three one two.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, poll call vote, John?
No.
Anthea.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
I vote no. All right, so it passes. So the only other thing we need to do is if we're going to amend the motion, uh, we need to send, um, prepare something in writing. Not tonight, but we don't need to vote on it, the language would be, but someone needs, we need to authorize a member of the board to prepare a memo for town meeting that can be given out, uh, that we're changing the motion, am I getting that right?
Yeah, so the idea is that we would get this motion, revised motion out to town meeting as quickly as possible, and it would go with a cover letter that has been authorized with its board, communicating whatever it is you want to communicate.
Yep.
Uh, outlining why the change is being made and.
Yeah, so you have to.
Ideally, we would get that out as soon as possible.
So we have to draft and approve a communication explaining why the change in dollar amount and the revised motion language. The memo once approved by the Select Board can go to town meeting through the clerk, and, uh, we'll have town meeting dispense with the seven-day rule.
So if we, if we get it out.
By Thursday.
Tomorrow, we'll meet the seven days.
So Michelle, can you do that memo?
Wednesday.
Yes.
Great. Uh, can we get a vote to authorize, or a motion to authorize Michelle to prepare that memo?
Good luck trusting me.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Anthea's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
That's your chance.
Thank you, guys, did you know what you take on?
No.
Share with the audit committee, you write memos, I love it.
But that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you.
Around.
I've lost my agenda. Somewhere here, somewhere in this. Oh, I got it right here. Um, OPEB policy, so this went to finance committee?
I vote yes.
Uh, and, uh, they had.
Vote yes.
They had no changes, right?
They had no changes.
Okay, everyone okay with the policy?
Yes.
Stacy and I did a great job drafting and Mark did a great job drafting.
Excellent job by staff, uh.
Well, it's only gone through three hundred revisions, so it's good.
Ten years later.
Yeah.
All right, so if there's a motion, any discussion, no, motion to, uh.
That we, um, adopt the OPEB policy as presented in the packet on Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Patty, can we record Michelle's vote as a yes or no? Thank you. That was unanimous. All right, that brings us to fall town meeting. Um, we don't need to go through all this right now. Um, but there are a couple of things. If it's possible. Okay, if we get through twelve, is that okay, uh, on our positions for fall town meeting?
I think you should do all the consent agenda items.
All right.
Sorry.
Let's start with the consent agenda, well, let's wait for Michelle, um.
Now you have to do is say that we approve favorable action on all these consent agenda items.
All right, well, first, is there any questions about the consent agenda items? Okay, so we need to take a position on all the articles for, we're doing articles for tall, that passed, now we're on.
OPEB passed?
Yes, now we're on articles.
All right then. I did vote yes. Thank you for that.
Now we're voting our positions, uh, not on all of fall town meeting articles, but as, as many as we can tonight. Um, so the consent agenda are the ones highlighted, any questions on that? Hearing none, um, can we get a motion to vote favorable action on the consent?
Move that we vote favorable, favorable action on the fall town meeting consent agenda items.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose, that passes, five oh. We don't need to vote on two or four, right Patty?
What?
Do we need to vote on two or four?
Yeah, because they're not that night.
Okay, they're not what night?
They'll be the first night.
They'll be the first night.
So everything, I mean, if you take it in order, they go looking at the.
All right, anyone have, everyone fine with one, two and four?
Yes.
All right.
Move that we vote favorable action on articles one, two and four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, no, all right, great. How about five, there's twenty. Twenty motions?
I think we just discussed funding all the engineering.
Is anyone, any discussion on the twenty motions? Is anyone opposed to any of the twenty motions? On article five.
Does anyone want to hear me read them out individually and vote on them?
Do we vote them as a package?
Yep.
Yes.
Great. Go ahead, Anthea.
Move that we vote favorable action on motions one through twenty and article five.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose, cheering none, it passes, all right. How about six, seven and eight are Select Board articles? Any discussion on those?
What were we thinking, just kidding.
Everyone okay with those? Do you want to vote? Okay, everyone feels comfortable to vote, Anthea, motion?
Uh, move that we vote favorable action on articles six, seven and eight.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Great, passes. Ten, is that the Waterfield parcel?
Nine fifty-five Maine.
I think nine fifty-five.
That's right. Another, so ten and eleven, eleven is the Waterfield part, parcel, right?
Yes.
John, are you presenting on that or am I presenting on that?
I think.
I thought I was presenting.
You're presenting, I'm, yeah, I just saw me.
Let's change that.
Are you on both ten and eleven, Rich, or just eleven?
I think I'm just eleven, I thought John was.
Yeah.
I thought John was eight, nine and ten.
I am.
Okay.
It's seven, eight, nine.
So, I'm sorry, seven, eight, nine. I'm sorry, seven, eight, ten, Ms. John.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Patty, I'm eleven.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is, uh, any discussion on ten or eleven? All right, are we ready to vote on those?
Move that we vote favorable action on articles ten and eleven.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Passes, all right. Twelve. Uh, is the FPC's, uh, engineering money for the Winchester High School.
How much is that money, I got to pull up my other.
It's a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars.
Flat from free cash.
Any questions on that or discussion?
Do we, uh, well, I know Chris just walked out the door, but I guess we'll hear more. We expect, Beth, do we think that's going to be enough engineering to do what we need, or is it going to be like phase one of engineering?
Well, I think they've done phase one of engineering, so this is.
This is phase two.
Phase one A probably.
Okay.
Um, but I think, I don't know if they'll get to full plans and specs, probably not, depending on the scope of the issue, but, um, there's probably a little bit more engineering. If you, if you assume ten percent of any instruction project is engineering, depending on the scope, a hundred thousand probably won't get you there.
I was going to say, I mean, it's a little late, I'm not going to say, oh, but it, should they have asked for a hundred fifty thousand and done more, but.
They, they came to that number somehow.
Okay.
So they have a scope that backs it up.
Okay.
Are we comfortable voting this?
I am comfortable.
Move that we, uh, vote favorable action on article twelve.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, hearing none, it passes. All right, then we go to, um, article fourteen, this has to do with, Ed?
No.
No, this is.
It's article fourteen.
Has to do with keep the money received from leases of school buildings. Adopting some, ask General Law, chapter forty. So currently, the money goes to the general fund?
Currently, the money goes to, I don't know, that.
The schools have?
Yes.
It's at the, at the top of page two, it says, district facility rental revenues are restricted to be spent only on the specific facilities from which we generate results.
Okay.
And then.
And it removes a fiscal year cutoff, so they could roll things over. Okay.
Are people prepared to vote on this tonight, or do you want more time to look into it? It's not going to be the first night, so we can, you want more time to look at it?
I'm good. I could vote it.
Okay. I see John reading, so I don't.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Move that we vote favorable action on article fourteen.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose, that passes. So then seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two are all Select Board articles. Are there, and, we're busy this time. Uh, is there any discussion on any of those articles, are we prepared to vote those tonight?
Can vote.
All right, so is there a motion?
Move that we vote favorable action on articles seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty-two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay.
Do we go up to twenty or twenty-two right there?
We're up to twenty, we're actually technically up to twenty-three because we did the consent agenda.
Yes, okay.
Do we want to stop there for now? What's this, what are these, uh, the finance committee ones?
Sub want to reduce prior year budget.
These are pretty standard issue, right? Twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have a problem with those, or need more time to?
Do we need to see their-
Are there numbers in the articles?
Yeah, there's, in the motion book, there's-
Let's, I'd rather hold on that, at least on twenty-six.
Okay.
So maybe we can just stop.
Fine.
Can we vote thirty-three?
Yep.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five?
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five. We can definitely vote thirty-three and thirty-five. Did the personnel board report come out?
It did. Did you get a copy, did you send a copy in the packet, Patty, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not, I didn't read it.
I didn't read it, sorry.
I know I have it, it's right here, but I don't want to vote personnel.
Um, any data with paper. Alright, let's vote it.
I forgot what I just said. What numbers?
Thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-five.
Move that we vote favorable action on Articles thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-five.
I'm not gonna vote on thirty-two.
Move that we vote favorable action on Articles thirty-three and thirty-five.
All of us in favor?
Same.
Alright, so we're, we're tabling thirty-two for now.
Right.
So thirty, thirty-four, and thirty-five, there's no motions.
I'm sorry, which one?
Thirty-four and thirty-five.
Thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay, so we-
There's no motion, so I, you don't need to vote anything on those.
We can accept your report of thirty-three. You're gonna make one, right?
We'll make one.
Yeah, we just did that.
We'll accept that.
Alright, so we're at thirty-three. So that just leaves twenty-four-
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yep. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Yes.
We'll discuss those at a later date. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Is there any other-
Before, so thirty, thirty and thirty-one are, sorry, twenty-nine and thirty are both citizens petitions?
Right.
If you, did you have questions for the proponents that you wanted to invite them to your future meeting, or?
I, if we could-
We can coordinate with that, if you want us to.
I talked to the proponents of each of those, but I, I wonder if there isn't merit to the whole board hearing from each of them. If they could come before Town Meeting, either of the first two nights, because it's certainly, we're not gonna take these up in the first two nights.
I believe they'll be on the third night.
They'll be on the third night.
Right, so if they could come
Maybe the second night?
Next week, or the second night, yeah.
Do you want to have one, the first night come, and then one for the second night come?
Keep them in different green rooms?
Yes. But also two, it allows you to keep it, a clarity for each side of one.
We could invite them in on the ninth, if you want.
One on the sixth and one on the ninth, I think is what Patty's saying. Or one on the ninth and one on the thirteenth.
I wouldn't do them, I wouldn't do it the same night, in case you have follow-up questions.
Okay, one on Monday, one on-
One on Thursday. So one on Monday, one on Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
I'll draw.
I'll just take them in order, and see who's available.
Yeah, ideally, take them in order, but if we, if we get thirty before we get twenty-nine, so be it.
Okay. Is there anything from the CPA working group? Do you guys wanna?
No, we've been meeting, and I think that we're going to, our next step is to kind of get together with the whole group again, and kind of consolidate what the content is that's been developed from the, the subcommittees. I don't know if that's what you think, if you're where we're at, but-
Yes, I think, I actually wonder if we take that content and we consolidate first and we, and look at it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since it's a select board report, or is it, was it CPA working group report? Do we need to approve anything before you present to Town Meeting?
She's your inventor, Rich, we'll find out.
I just, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I mean, do the rules require us to do that? I'm just trying to sort that out.
I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
Uh-
It'd be good to see something.
It's not your report.
I know, but I'm just saying-
Well, figure that.
I'm just saying, yeah, that-
I can do something quickly.
We can get, uh-
No, but I'm saying, like, in the second or third night, you know, carve out some time to just give us a preview, maybe?
Give us that, like, pharmaceutical disclaimer version of it all, like, this is-
Good practice.
Yes.
Good practice.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get, we'll get everything. I think we're gonna be-
If you guys even started yet, come on.
The night before, John, the night before. We're gonna go old school.
We'll time you and say, sorry. John, I was thinking, we need a cool name for our committee, because they have their own CPA committee. We need our own committee name for Rich to give us updates.
So nothing on the CPA, we'll stay tuned for that. Alright, that leaves twenty Glenwood. So there's a lot of stuff out there right now on this.
What?
What'd you say?
It's exactly the what?
I don't know what you mean.
So, you know, where we're at is we have, you know, this P N S signed by a potential buyer. And, you know, they're waiting for our response. And we've, we have a notice of award that's been issued. And, you know, every, you know, couple days, there's a new correspondence from, you know, a meeting from the Housing Partnership Board, the Affordable Housing Trust. You heard everyone tonight. So I don't know where that, that leaves everyone. You know, I, I do think, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I think, you know, certainly, I'm not sure what's being said at these Housing Partnership Board meetings, or Affordable Housing Trust meetings. Certainly, I've read some articles in the Winchester News about quotes attributed to some members. But, you know, I I think at the end of the day, we have opinions from legal counsel. You heard Liz last week. We've gotten stuff in writing of what, you know, the risks and exposure potentially are. And we have, you know, correspondences from the buyer's attorney to our counsel, that, you know, imploring us to accept and continue to act in good faith with the, the award, and move forward. You know, not much has changed, at least where I sit. You know, and I went back after our meeting last week and seeing these quotes, you know, that you know, John Sevier saying this wasn't really a collaborative effort. The trust must be more assertive, or see at the table. And I'm kind of perplexed at that. And some of these quotes that are attributable are kind of, you know, throwing stones at this board. And, you know, like you said, it was a poorly constructed, poorly executed RFP at this last Housing Production Board meeting. And, and again, I just don't, I guess I'm just not understanding where that comes from. And I think, you know, looking at the timeline, and I went through, I went through, back through everything. You know, Mike, you gave an update on May eighteenth to the Housing Partnership Board, where you said that we were gonna put out an RFP, that we were gonna get a development proposal, or we're gonna sell the land, and the money would go to the Affordable Housing Trust. The Housing Partnership Board, outside of special meetings about Cross Street, even though John Sevier was well aware of this going out, and you were well aware of this, you know, I've got emails dating back to June twenty-second, where he's talking about conversations he had with Menford Housing, how they wanted to get the RFP, that, you know, where to send it to, her contact information, and they wanted to know two initial questions, how much time would they have to respond, and, you know, you know, they would need a subsidy from the town. This is back in June. The Housing Partnership Board didn't meet again, outside of a special meeting to discuss Cross Street until September twentieth. And they knew this was out there. John Sevier went to the walkthrough. He sent an email August sixteenth explaining that Medford Housing wasn't interested. The Affordable Housing Trust met in March. They then met in May ninth. On June sixth, they were scheduled to have a meeting, but they didn't have a quorum. Only Marty Jones was present. She talked to Catherine Boyle about other things. She sent us, and like, you were on the email, on June twenty-third, saying that she knew the RFP was going out, and that they wanted to use their expertise to kind of drive developers to the project, and to bid on the project. But yet, outside of a meeting on July twenty-sixth, where they had an executive session to talk about another project, they spent fifty minutes meeting, and then decided not to do their business agenda that included updates on development projects, and then didn't meet again till September nineteenth. So, here, everyone is saying that this isn't a collaborative effort from the select board, where we outlined the RFP, we made it aware of all these people, and Mike, you were the point person for this board. We highlighted it on July, so on May fifteenth, we met about it, June fifth, we met about it, June twenty-sixth, we met about it in public session. We approved the RFP. July thirty-first, we, in writing, stated what the, the develop, that the RFP was out, the timeline, everything, from, you know, the RFP would be available, pre-bid meeting, when we would select, when they were due. And yet, these two boards didn't meet. And it wasn't until we actually awarded the RFP that everyone kind of perked up, and came out of the woodwork, and now, you know, really wants to be involved, which is great. You know, we want these boards to be involved. We, you know, it's great that they now want to be involved in one sixty-four street, that they want to be involved in North Board Road, that they're trying to get involved in this. But at the end of the day, the written record that we have is that no one was interested in this project. No developer was interested in it. And to the point that Diab raises in his letter, you know, council has opined that it was, it says that the select board, with the assistance of the planning board and the Housing Partnership Trust, it mentioned nothing about the Affordable Housing, excuse me, Housing Partnership Board, mentioning nothing about the Affordable Housing Trust, would consider proposals. There were no proposals for development. And council has said that, you know, it was in an advisory capacity. You didn't need to take that, and you've all seen those emails. So, I just, you know, as I've said before, this was a matter of last resort. No one was interested. The only written communication that we have is that no one was interested in it. We made an award, and now, we do, we undo it at our peril. And what do I mean by that? Well, we have a new appraisal. We have, you know, what it, what the land is valued at. You know, there's questions of if you, you know, combine it with a lot, maybe it's more valuable. But we also have a citizen who's willing to take on the extra costs to tear down the house. We have a neighborhood that seems to support what they're saying. And, you know, we're left with, you know, speculation, and as I said before, a money pit. We're not sure what this will cost to do this work. We're not sure, you know, you know, what do we want to invest in this at this point in time? To me, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Partnership, Housing Partnership Board didn't do their job when this RFP went out. They had full knowledge of it. They were late to the game. They're making all these different proposals that would have sounded great at the time all this was happening, but they didn't meet. And I can't be blamed for that. We can't be blamed for that. We took the information that we had at the time, and we issued an award. And to go back on that is going to hurt, you know, our, our, our reputation. It's gonna have legal consequences. And at the end of the day, these neighbors, you know, will they appeal, will they, will they sue us? I'm not sure. If there's a forty B that's presented, they can appeal it. They can, you know, drive up costs. And is it all worth it at the end? All the information that you have right now would have changed your mind in how we went forward with this at that time. You now know that the planning board's against this. You now know the Housing Partnership Board's against this. But at the end of the day, would you, would it change your mind? To me, it doesn't. Where we're kind of, we're at. I'm sorry?
The planning board hasn't voted on this, so the planning board is not against it. We have had no opportunity to vote on it, because we were never presented with the proposal.
Okay.
Our complaint is that you made a decision without actually even telling us you had, anything had come in. We couldn't have been part of the process, because we weren't informed that you had received a response. And that's where our complaint is from.
Well, assume the-
The planning board has had no discussion about this, other than to say, we should have been part of the process when you received the proposal.
Assume they're against it. They haven't voted on it.
How can you, I, I don't know, Rich, just assume they're against, I mean-
So, all we're doing is, you know, by delaying this further, we're just, in my opinion, we're, we're showing bad faith. We're, we're, we're going, you know, we're, we're giving ammunition to the potential awardee that we're, you know, that we're, we're looking for a better deal out there. And to me, that just is proving this case. So, you know, I think, I think there was a ball dropped here, but he can't point the finger at us. I think we did everything we were supposed to do. And, you know, I think the record is quite clear. And I think, Mike, to be quite honest with you, I'm pretty disappointed in some of the quotes that I read, that you've made about this board, the process, especially since you were the lead person on it, at these Housing Partnership Board meetings, and these Affordable Housing Trust meetings. And, you know, we want to talk collaboration, it's great. You know, I'm glad that, you know, this has kind of woken everyone up to really, truly collaborate. But these, these people, they, they didn't do their job. And, you know, we made a decision based on the information we had at the time, and, you know, in my opinion, we're kind of stuck with it at this point. So, I would vote to move forward with the P N S, and move forward with the sale, but that's me.
Yeah, I mean, just, just a couple things. I don't want to, you know, be here all night. We've already been here for four hours. You know, I certainly stand by anything that I've said in a meeting. I think this process began in a collaborative way. When we asked to have the planning board and the Housing Partnership Board review applications, and we put that in the RFP, we were committing to a process. I think you heard from the, the planning board and the Housing Partnership Board that we were left out of that process. Nobody thought that a decision was going to be made without their input, and that's exactly how the RFP is written. So it doesn't say, "May," it says, "The Housing Partnership Board and the Planning Board will meet and discuss this." They all, the planning board, you know, especially, they actually will schedule a meeting, and they will discuss these things as a group, and come to a conclusion, and give feedback on certain things. Certainly, the Housing Partnership Board will as well. But, you know, meeting a, a few days after we've, we've received this, and not contacting anybody, not providing information is not a good process. Doing an appraisal after the RFP has, or an updated appraisal after the RFP has been issued is not good process either. I mean, I, if, if I knew that we were making this kind of shoot-from-the-hip determination that the, the pre-existing non-conforming status was lost, I think that I would not have said, "Put out an RFP." And I think the rest of the board would have said, "That's a waste of time for us, then. Let's talk to the Affordable Housing Trust. Let's talk to the Housing Partnership Board." Because of the Town Meeting vote gave the benefit of the sale of the, the Glenwood property to the Affordable Housing Trust, that you've heard from both Marty and Chris Galletta from the trust, that they never intended for the trust to be a, an applicant for the RFP, and bidding against themselves. So, I think there was a process that was promised. We didn't follow any of it. We bizarrely didn't follow Mass General Law, thirty B, Section sixteen either, on, through the procurement process, doing a, in, using an old appraisal, and then going, and, and doing another one, an updated one after the process.
Is there prohibition against that?
There's, there's a requirement from Mass General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section sixteen, that says that we have to do an appraisal before we issue an RFP.
Okay, but we got one afterwards, but there's no law against that. Your implication is- There's a law that says you can't get an appraisal after an RFP?
No, it says that you have to have an appraisal before.
Okay, yeah, we had one.
But it was, it was, it was an old one, that all of a sudden we determined it to-
Okay, but you brought this up, Mike.
But-
Mike, here, alright, so we hired Jay Talman because of his land planning and permitting expertise, right? That's what we did. Here's Jay's letter. "In summary, we endorse a process that has been followed to date. Additionally, while there may be, in limited circumstances, be grounds for refusing to sign the personal sale agreement here, and while I would certainly defer to the board in this regard, I am compelled to express some caution against such an action." I didn't go to law school. He's an expert. You might be. I don't know. This guy is. I'm going with him.
I, John, I, I think what he said there is expressing ca, I don't know why you're this angry with me.
I'm, I'm not angry with you. You keep making these allegations. We shot from the hip. No one here shot from the hip, Mike. It was fa, maybe you did, I didn't.
I didn't, but I mean, I, I think that, that it's, a lot of these accusations are coming unfairly at me. We had a process-
Mike, because you were quoted in the paper for saying all this outrageous stuff about the board, and how we're a bunch of miles individuals. Okay, well, let me see here, Mike. Want to pull it out and read it? I don't want to, but I will.
I don't, John, I, I don't know what we're talking about at this point here. We're talking about what the best outcome is for the town. And I think that
Right.
Listening to our stakeholder groups that thought they were a part of this process, and our boards, is important, right? So that's what I'm saying, so-
No one's disputing that.
And so, I think that the objective here is, what it always has been, what we've been telling Town Meeting, is get the best outcome for affordable housing. And I think that we do owe demolition of that property to get that complete for the neighbors. Both things we owe, and I think both things that we can deliver at the same time. So what I would say is this, we've got, you know, Dave Arico that's willing to help out. We've got other people. I would say this. Let's give, based on Dave's request, let's give the, I, I would move that we give the Affordable Housing Trust ninety days to come up with a plan. And, and after that ninety days, if we don't come up with a plan that is acceptable to the board, then it automatically goes to that applicant. I'm not asking for us to reissue the RFP, to do anything, but I think it's fair to do that-
Is that a motion? You said you'd make a motion, so I'm just trying to figure out, is it a motion, or are you just spitballing?
Well, a little bit of both, we're just having a discussion. But, but yeah, so I'll, I'll make the motion, but I just want to- Um, well, a little bit of both. We're just having a discussion. But, but yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion, but I just want to explain that, my reasoning. The neighbors said that they, um, their priority obviously is getting rid of Glenwood. It is, uh, the, the, um, the, the existing house that's there. Um, and we know from the, um, the applicant that they need nine months to do it. I think we can get that done almost immediately. And the benefit to that, um, us is if the trust does it or the, the, um, uh, the town does it, we do use the Select Board Housing Fund, is we get $70,000 from them instead of 40. We're really, you know, we're paying them $30,000, right, to do the demolition because we're taking their initial offer of 70 and we're reducing it by 40.
I, I don't think we can do that, Mike. I don't think we can take the 70. I think Town Council's ruled that, that, that was not responsive to the RFP and it's out of order. So, we can take the 40, or we can, we can take the 40-
Yep.
Or we can put it out to RFP again.
Yeah. I mean, I think that we can also, I, I think we can negotiate with them, uh, as well.
We cannot. We went through that with Town Council sitting here.
Yeah. Yeah.
The problem is, we issued the notice of award.
I, I understand, Rich. I, I, I get it. I, I'm, I'm trying to be creative here and I'm trying to respond to um, a lot of residents and a lot of town meeting members that are going to be upset with us. And, um, and I think that this is a affordable housing project. And I think that we can, we can make it right by doing this. And, and we can work with them on, if we use Select Board Housing Funds, whatever we do. Um, I think we can, we can demo the property, um, and we can work with Dave over the next, you know, um, 90 days. And if we come up with nothing, um, I'll, I'll make that motion right now that it automatically, you, the award, um, goes to them. So-
I'll second that motion.
Yep.
And I think, Rich, I think we're gonna lose, we're gonna look bad either way, right? We're gonna look bad with the, with the current awardee neighbor by delaying it for 90 days to see what comes out of the par- because I, I think, Rich, if we had Housing Partnership Board and we had input or a plan, would it have changed my vote in September? Yes. Would it have changed my vote? Yes, it would have. Yes, we had nothing. I agree with you. We had one respondent with a cash offer. And now we have potentially the promise of a real plan, not a hope-for plan. Because I, I think, I was communicating with some of the folks over the weekend, "Where have you been? Where is the plan?" To say, "Give us time. We will," I think the clock starts, either there's a plan or it goes to PNS. But I'm, I'm gonna second Mike's motion. I think in that instance, and I, I get the neighbors have waited, we've owned it for five years apparently. Time goes by. Stinks to wait 90 more days, but they can wait 90 more days.
But I think-
Because the disposition's been five years and coming. And if we can get affordable housing on that lot, I am concerned about construction equipment and the space for that on, building on that lot. But if we can get affordable housing on that lot, I think that was the primary goal of town meeting. The secondary goal was put, sell it, get money, and put it away.
Is your na-
I, I think the only issue, my issue with that is we've issued a notice of award. So, if we go and give it to the Affordable Housing Trust, they come up with a plan and you all accept it, I will never accept it. I think because it exposes the town to significant legal risks.
What, what are, what are those significant? I, I don't, that's what I don't understand, Rich.
It's called, every contract has a covenant of good faith and fair dealings. You entered a contract, you issued an award. We're not acting in good faith. This is exactly why you have an RFP process. Because now we're saying, you know what? We accepted your bid.
Go get a better offer.
But, but we're gonna go get a better offer and we're gonna do something different. That is 100% not acting in good faith. It is a slam dunk litigation matter.
It's not, Rich. And, 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 you know, I, I, I really disagree on that. I think you're creating a lot of fear around a legal issue that, um, I, I, I don't agree with there. Town Council, with, with, with John just read, um, he, he said pretty clearly in two emails that, um, that we could do it either way and that it's up to the board. He didn't present this idea that there's all, and, and what is the risk for the town? How, is it, is it the money or is it the land?
It's the money. It's-
It's, it's, it's so-
It's, it's legal costs to defend, okay? It's potential award of damages. It's the fact that this property sits there. Now we have to tear down the property. Who knows? It's a 1908 structure. Who knows what we're gonna find in it? Now it becomes the money pit that I'm talking about. Uh, and at the end of the day, okay, the Affordable Housing Trust comes up with a plan. They're going to spend how much money subsidizing a development here? And is that the best use of affordable housing money to get this one unit?
That's their decision though, Rich, how they spend their money. And I think that, um, here, the, I, I'm, I'm giving an off-ramp to the board here that I think works out. The, the applicant's not gonna demolish this property for nine months anyway. So, if we can do that sooner, that's what the neighborhood wants, right? So, um, that's what they put in the PNS, right? Nine, that's, and you said-
So, who's going to demolish it?
Um, well, we can talk about that. But I mean, I think certainly, um, we can, um, come up with that-
It has to be in the plan.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the plan. And, and, you know-
So, you made a motion. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say something.
Yep.
Um, it's, it- I think we miss- Look at everything as mischaracterized. I think when, like, we cannot sit here and point fingers that it was everybody else's fault that we've gone through, been talking about this RP for months. Um, I think we missed what we should have done in looking at the RFP and understanding, like, yes, we had one response come through. What do we need to do to, is it appropriate for us to award that if we don't have anything to talk, right? We have something to talk about in terms of that response, but we don't have anything to, to compare to. And so, you know, regardless of that, it probably would have made sense at the time if we looked at that RFP and got, had other boards come to the table or ask them for a memo on that. We didn't do that. And so, I think the challenge is, as you've said, Rich, we've gone through the process. We've voted four to one here at the table to award the RFP. We didn't have discussion at that point of not awarding it is on, like, we didn't go back to, "We can't award this because of process." Because I think if it had come up at that point that, "Wait a minute, we're voting to award this RFP and the RFP says this and we didn't do it," that, at that point, people would have been amenable to, that's a reason for having further discussion and get, and seeking more input. So, like-
I did raise that issue in that meeting, by the way.
So, either way, we've, we screwed up, right? We haven't done what we indicated we were gonna do. We made a decision. It may or may not have been hasty. It was with the information we had at hand. That, and that was sort of at that point. You know, this lot is, has been problematic, has been an eyesore and it, you know, an issue with the neighborhood because it requires maintenance it hasn't had in years. That priority is getting that, like, first priority is getting that cleared up. So, I, I just think, I mean, I said last time we talked about this, if we're gonna get it cleared up and spend the $30,000 to get it cleared up and then nothing happens with it, that's like a $70,000 swing, eh, you know? So, that, I think that's a, that's a risk. Um, I think, as Michelle said, yeah, if the Planning Board had been here and looked at the RFP with us, and if Affordable Housing Trust or Housing Partnership Board had looked at the responses with us, we may have come to a different conclusion. We may have come to the conclusion that, you know, in terms of zoning or in terms of dollar value or whatever it was, I don't think that at that point, um, I don't know, I can't, I can't speak for myself in what I would have done in a different situation. But, you know, I don't necessarily know that what we would have come up with is now what's coming across as these proposed solutions because we don't, because we're looking for the, the next best thing because we're unhappy with it. So, I just think it's, like, I think we, we should admit that, you know, we weren't necessarily, weren't doing the best process to evaluate this at the time. But at the time, it looked like this is what we have. We knew that John had been at the walkthrough. You know, we, there were assumptions made that Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Partnership Board were aware of the RFP, knew what was happening. Nobody bid on it. The RFP was developed with the town planner and the planning board. So, like, you know, we took this as information that the RFP was designed in a way that it would seat proposals and it didn't. Um, so, I mean, I don't really know what we should do with it. I think it is, you know, risky for us to get into something where we pull back the, the award from the neighbors. I, I, you know, I gather from the neighbors, their number one priority is clearing the lot. So, you know, if, if the town cleared the lot, are the neighbors happy with that? Um, but I, I just, you know, I think it gets murky when we, when we try to pull back an RFP after we, we said we were gonna award for a reason that's, that's, you know, oops, we didn't evaluate it the right way. For, not for, you know, not for a, a reason of cost to pull back the RFP. That's, the bidders didn't do anything, the, you know.
I, I totally, I totally- Me. Um, I've just never, I'm speaking for me. I'm not comfortable doubling down on what I think is a bad decision, that I think in retrospect I wouldn't have made. So, that's, but I completely appreciate where you're coming from. And that's where I'm coming from.
So, I mean, uh, you know, I guess, you know, what I would say is, I will sign the RFP today for 90 days from now, um, I mean, sign the, um, sorry, the PNS for 90 days and date it 90 days forward and say, "Let's give a shot to the Affordable Housing Trust, um, to come up with something, um, of a solution." And that clock, the clock starts ticking today. And if they, if they can't, uh, just, just let me finish for a second.
We can't sign the, we can't sign the PNS, Mike.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that just furthers the argument of bad faith. You can't sign the PNS with no contingencies saying, saying, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna pull it back at the last second. Now you're even building a better case for these people.
No, we're not, Rich. Uh, uh, what I'm trying to do is come up with a solution here. This is a policy decision for the board. There's a lot at stake here. The neighborhood has, let me just finish for a second without being interrupted. The, the, the neighborhood is, is owed, um, this building being removed as soon as possible. I think that we can do that, um, you know, faster than anyone. Um, and, um, and I think that that's what these funds are for. And, um, is there some risk, um, shou-, you know, with, um, spending money and, and, and maybe not getting the, the benefit of it? Sure. Um, but I think that's what affordable housing looks like. There is absolutely not a single thing that we can do with $40,000 with the Affordable Housing Trust. And I'm sure the trust will take it, but it just puts, um, us further down the road of not solving a problem. We basically have three lots that, um, are available for us to build in small right now. North Border Road, potentially 160 Forest and Glenwood. We're gonna be losing one of those three without to, you know, a, any sort of process or any sort of chance. I think there was a lot of miscommunication here. It, some of that was mine, it, and I apologize. But I think to Michelle's point, I think that we can make this right, um, and not double down and, and just reinforce a bad decision. And my point in saying that I'll sign the, the, the PNS, um, is, uh, is, is not a legal one, but it's just a matter of showing good faith that I'm not gonna come back here at the, you know, after 90 days and then try to claw this back. So, but I will work diligently with, with Dave Arico, with Chris Galletta, Marty Jones, and the rest of the trust, uh, to make sure that we come up with something. Um, that's, that's it. That's, that's all I can offer. I think it's reasonable, especially, uh, I mean, I wouldn't have said 90 days to Dave, but Dave threw that out there. Um, but, um, I think we can, I think we can get this done and we can please the neighborhood, um, here. Um, so, um, that is, um, an immediate house, an affordable housing, um, objective.
So, so what is, is there a motion? Because I'm now kind of lost track.
There's a motion. Have a second.
All right. So, any further discussion?
Um, I will say from, we have two people at this table who have a legal background. I am fully, do not, I'm not a lawyer. I, so, when it comes between, can we pull this RFP back and what's the level of risk from a perspective from Town Council? I, I mean, I would like to hear Town Council weigh on what, like, specifically what the risks are if we were to do that. Um, I'm not-
Well, I think Liz opined on it last week. Oh, I mean, on that. And Jay gave us an opinion.
I, I, I don't think so. I think, I mean, I didn't get the, the, the sense that that was an official opinion. The RFP, I, you know, I think that I-
Don't let her, isn't it?
I, I think the RFP, and I've read this out in multiple meetings, it has a clawback provision that says there is no rights vested in, and I'm paraphrasing here, um, in the applicant until all approvals have been made, right? So, and we put that in all our, our RFPs for this particular reason, right? And so, I think that's why we are not, um, there's no attorney that's filing suit against us right now is because they know that that's there. And what we did was, we, um, approved a notice of award and we didn't even have the exhibit, um, in, when we, when we voted on that, that, that explained their reasoning, which was, which was flawed. Um, and whatever that is, um, my objective, honestly, and I, I sent a, an email to Beth back in, uh, I don't know, March or April, saying, "Listen, I'll clean, I'll personally go up there this weekend to clean up the property and I'll, I'll clean it up. Just get me a DPW truck. Get me somebody to, to do it." I'm, I'm committed to this project and I think that 90 days, um, is not, not too much more time, um, for, for us to, um, to have a shot at solving this and making it right. And I do think making it right is, if the, um, Affordable Housing Trust can't come up with something, um, then, um, then it goes. Um, and I guess my sense is that it, it, it should go to the applicant, you know, um, at that point.
So, I-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out to an RFP again.
I, 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 I'm not gonna repeat what I've said seven different times. I mean, I'm just looking at the notice of award. I mean, I'd file, as a litigator, I'd file suit on this tomorrow. I mean, I would have. I mean, it's just, I just think, I think that's the risk.
And I'd file a motion for summary judgment and we'd be out of there in 15 minutes. But anyways, I, that, that's, I, I-
You wouldn't be, Mike.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, you know, um, you know, r- resolve this with, um, I, I think it's being reasonable. As I said, I think 90 days is even a short run for us. But it gets, um, it gets a solid determination for us, um, in that 90 days. We're gonna be spending time in town meeting and everything. Um, it's, it's, uh, I'm sure that the trust, that means they're gonna have to really buckle down and work hard as well. Um, but the trust has resources, um, and it has the skill to do this. And, um, you know, I'll, I'll vote to, um, issue the RFP after 90 days if we don't, if the Affordable Trust does not have a proposal that the board accepts.
So, so I, I think the motion's out of order because we've issued a notice of award. So, we would need to, we, we're not issuing RFP where-
Sorry, I maybe didn't, did I say RFP? I meant, um-
So, I, I think, look, if you guys want to give the Affordable Housing Trust a chance to put this out there, I think in order to lessen the exposure for this town, you need to cut the buyer free at this point and say, "We are going to go in a different direction." Anything else, you're just adding to our exposure. So, if you think a better offer is out there or you want to explore that, which is up to all of you. I'm not there. But if you do, my suggestion is you cut the buyer free right now. And I think that's what Liz or Jay or somebody said at some point during these conversations. Um, and, you know, because all we're doing is, you know, we're making a bad situation worse by keeping them hanging out there.
I think if their objective though, Rich, is genuinely just to get that, that house removed, um, and we do that and we can do that, um, and we've already approved the funds to do that and we can figure out a way to do it. Um, you know, I've been on this board a long time. We, um, we find ways to make things happen. And, um, if that, if everybody in the neighborhood wants the house removed and cleaned up and that lot cleared, um, and we do that, then I'll take them at their word that that's all that they, that's all that the applicants want is to have it be cleared. Um, they said that they have no, um, present plan to build there. Um, but I, I do think that-
But we're, we're gonna, if we're clearing the lot and we're going to build there and they've gotten an award to make it part of their lot, I mean, you don't think they're gonna fight you on that? I guess it's-
No, I don't because they told us that their, their number one objective that we heard from them tonight is the demolition of that building.
I think that's number one, but number two is to not have something built there.
They actually said the opposite of that.
I don't, I don't. Did anyone else hear that tonight?
Yeah, I think that, I think everyone said that they, um, are, it's a diverse, we heard Ms. Bowers say, uh, it's a diverse neighborhood and they're not against, um, housing there. They're just, they're just against what is there now, which I think all of us agree is, is, is horrible. It's not a good outcome. It's embarrassing for the town. Um, it's, uh, but it's something that we have the resources to take care of. And I, I don't know. I'm just asking for 90 days. And I, I think that that's a, um, it's a reasonable solution for us to kind of, um, call, clawback at a, a, a messy process. And, um, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of people that have the skill, um, to do this. I mean, uh, Dave Arico does this, um, professionally, um, and certainly- and certainly, um, at the, the higher level, Marty and, and Chris Coletta as well. Um, so.
So at this point, like, I, I'm not gonna change my position because of the letter from Jay. I, I think he's a professional, so I'm gonna rely on him. So I'm, I'm tapping out saying, I'm not gonna go for this. Rich, you, you're tapping out for whatever reason. So it's really between you three, amongst you three, to figure out what you're gonna do. Cause you already know where we stand. We'd be standing place on the same side for different reasons, but I'm a no.
I'm a no too, but, so is there any further discussion or I'll just call for a roll call vote?
Yeah, on ninety days, what are we gonna have at the end of ninety days? Like conceivably, what is the objective that you, we give? We pull pull this process, what's at the end of ninety days that we can say we have?
Well, the three of you are gonna have to vote, cause I'm never gonna support this.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to vote on an affordable housing plan and approve that. And if you approve it, then you're going to have a really ticked off person who's been awarded an RFP that has now had the rug slipped out from under them.
That's not the question, I guess.
No, I mean, that's what you're gonna be left with is you're gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna, you're either gonna, you're either gonna approve the Affordable Housing Trust plan and go forward with that or go forward with some other plan and reject and renege on the award. Or you're gonna go forward with their award.
Right, we'll go forward with, I, we can leave the, the notice, uh, we can leave it out there and we can say in ninety days, if the Affordable Housing Trust doesn't have a plan, um, that is accepted by the board, um, and we can have them come back here and present it to us to solve all of these issues, demolition, whatnot, uh, then it, um, it, it goes to those applicants in particular. And we can work with the planning board, we can work with the housing partnership.
Yeah, and I, I think for me, Anthea, like, it needs to be more than interest and people and we're talking to folks. It's name, date, timeline, design, high level, sketch it on a napkin, I don't care. What's it gonna look like? When's it gonna start? What's the name? How are we gonna get there? It's not, we have lots of interested people. We've been hearing that ever since September when people kind of reacted to our vote. So that's what I'm thinking we need. At least that's what I, that's what I,
I mean, is this like, in, in ninety days, there's a clear lot, a developer and
Yes.
is that feasible in?
I'm not sure the, the lot's clear, but the plan to clear it has to be there.
We could.
I don't, I don't know how you do this.
I think if we sign this and the neighbors take it, that lot is cleared by the end of this calendar.
You just said that it was up there.
That's gonna get cleared as quickly as they possibly can.
Well, Mike, I have to look out for the best interest of the town in the sense of exposure. I, I mean, I mean, I would want Legal to weigh in on what process you need to go through to accept this. Cause I mean, Legal has certain opinions about what the Affordable Housing Trust can and cannot do. We would have to deed the property, I would think, to the Affordable Housing Trust first. And then they would need to, they're subject to thirty,
You know?
What?
Or a license or something, so. I, I,
They're, they're subject to thirty B. Uh, and they would need to, to put out an RFP for these different services. So I don't think it's as simple as, all right, you know, Dave Arico's gonna build this for us.
That's not, um, nobody's saying that. I mean, I think what Michelle just laid out is her expectation is extremely high of what we would be, you know, presenting here within ninety days. Uh, it, it actually makes me a little nervous, but I think it's fair. Um, and, um, and that's it. And I think that we can be creative and we can, you know, use town council and take a recommendation and, and go from there. And then we close the door on it after ninety days, one way or another. And I take the applicants at their word that their goal is to clean up this property. I, I, I don't think that they're lying to us. I think that is their goal. Um, and I think that we can provide that, that solution, um, to them without them paying anything.
Any other discussion?
Um,
All right.
I'm not.
Roll call vote. Um, John?
No.
Uh, Anthea?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Fails. Is there any other motions?
Yes. I vote we move to enter into a PNS with the, uh, successful bidder and, uh, no, I don't know, so Beth, here's my question for this. Can we put a stipulation in the PNS that the deed does not allow them to, then build, use that to merge with the other lot to build a two-family?
Um, not the current PNS because they've signed the current PNS, so we could ask town council to, you know.
I'd like that stipulation in there.
So.
I, I know I didn't word that.
Can you, yeah, I just wanna make sure I have.
So the, the intent is that, that when we sell that lot, it's not, it's not to enhance, um, it's, i- i- it's, it's to preclude.
You're looking for a deed restriction on this piece of, on this parcel that it not be built on? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, i- i- it can't, it can't be added to the lot next door or, or any lot to help satisfy the zoning to build a two-family. We wanted, cause
Yep.
you, you don't wanna have the speculation. I don't, I don't know how that operates, but I'm a,
I don't know if you can put that type of restriction. I defer to, do you know if you could put that restriction on there, Do you?
I would immediately go to town council and ask.
I don't, I'm not sure that that, to your point, it's a deed restriction. I don't know how we would,
Okay.
the mechanism, I guess, would, you'd start with the PNS, but then we'd have to somehow put that restriction on the deed, I think. But we can certainly, I can certainly ask the question.
Please.
And Jay will be here, you know, next, he'll be with us for the next three meetings before town meeting, so.
So your motion is to enter into a PNS with a, can, you know, a, a condition that, uh, that they not, that it not be combined with the other, that it maintains separate lot status.
Right.
And not be combined.
Right.
I think, I think Jay's position would be that once it's in common ownership.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
So I guess,
So I, I guess,
I like an answer that before.
Yeah, maybe not the motion to sign the PNS, but first to have this issue resolved.
Yes.
Or is there something in zoning or like something from planning that we should?
Yep.
It's eleven eighteen DAB, sure. Why not, right?
Um, from a housing perspective, reducing the ability of putting another house in town is a bad idea, I think. Because what it does is it doesn't increase the supply of houses. And while affordable housing is important, the biggest thing that will get us to lower housing prices is a larger supply of houses. So one of the reasons why the MBTA three A thing came through is it's trying to drive production of units. And while I prefer to have an affordable house on that lot, removing the ability of the owner to put in a new house, I think is going against what we need to do in this town, which is build more housing. So I think that there is a disparity in the value of the property. I've already said that, but if you wanna go forward and award this,
Yep.
from a housing perspective, in terms of increasing the number of units, then I don't, I would suggest not putting in a deed restriction. So.
Yeah, good point. All right, thanks to you. Strike that.
Is there another motion?
Can we also have an update on the appraisal? I don't think, you know, Mark Green started, um, was aware of the, um, our, the zoning that allows, uh, above, was it eleven thousand square feet of property for you to be able to build a duplex by right? I mean, that, that changes the value substantially and I think that that was DAB's point. And so, um, I think he kind of, you know.
I, I don't know what that gets us at this point. All right.
Are there any other motions to be made tonight? Do you wanna revise your motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I, I was gonna make, I, I'm, I'm, I'll stick by my motion with that change to, to enter to a P, uh, PNS with the successful, uh, bidder.
Sorry, say that again?
Enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the successful bidder.
For, we need to amend the closing date because it's passed. So close November fifteenth?
Perfect.
Is there a second?
Second, I don't think we have a a feasible other option to go back on our award.
Do you have seconds? Roll call, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, um, Anthea raised that issue, so I'm just, I'm speaking to it. Um, I, town council gave us an opinion that it says it's the board's decision on the noticeable award what to do. That's what he said clearly in there and we talked about this numerous times. So, um, there is the clawback provision that we have in every, um, RFP that we issue that says it's not final until all approvals are submitted. So, and I think I said this at the other meeting. What that means to me is not just that we can claw it back, but they are on notice that we can do that, um, at this point. So the notice of award, even when we didn't even have the, um, the full, um, application from them, um, I, I, I think that we're definitely well with two feet in the, the good faith, um, category. So.
So, uh, to be fair, I'm, I'm with you on not having that piece of information. We presented that to Liz last time and she said that's not enough. I will say from my, my perspective as somebody who's bid on a lot of RFPs, not land RFPs, but bid on a lot of RFPs, process, competitive, um, where there's a single bidder, that when something is not final until it's final, it's generally not put in there as it's not final until it's final because we're gonna get your bid, say we're gonna give it to you and then make, you know, do some, like, look at something different. It's, it's not final until it's final and then the PNS has to be signed. There, there, there's like other, it, it feels, it feels, your interpretation of that feels disingenuous to, it's not final until it's final because we could find out that, you know, I, I don't know. So as, from the perspective on somebody who has submitted RFPs, been awarded or been not awarded RFPs, you know, you don't read that and think they're gonna take my offer and then go looking for a better one. And I think that that's, that's how it feels like it's being interpreted and I, and I don't think that's what, what people don't, how people don't really read that.
But if I, but,
Just to piggyback on what Anthea says, I think you have to look at the, the notice of award language and I think that's what's controlling and I don't, I don't see that wiggle room in the notice to award.
Yeah, but I, I,
It's like an offer when you buy residential real estate, it goes from offer to PNS. You know, you have that wiggle room language in the offer. Um, I just don't see it in this award. I think it's,
Well, we haven't signed a PNS, so I mean, there's no, there's no contract yet that exists. So I mean, I think at that point, that's a little bit harder for us to claw back, but um, I get, so when you look at, when you're the, the applicant for this RFP, you, um, what you see is that there, you apply, but there is a process. So the planning board, the Housing Partnership Board, you're on notice that somebody could say, we don't like this, right? So, um, that's, that's my sense and I think that there, um, you know, where you, I, I don't know, the, I think it's pretty clear here and it's been in all of our, um, RFPs, you know, and it's for that, that reason. Um, and um, you know, I get that, um, there's some confusion around it, but I think if our objective is, um, you know, I think we can meet our objectives here, um, without issuing this to them and, um, that's, um, you know, my only thought. I think that it's, it's pretty specific. Town council said we can do whatever we want. Um, so, right, and that he said that you, that it's up to the select board to choose, um, you know, and we haven't actually had town council here to discuss really. Um, I think Liz had very cursory understanding of things and, um, um, so that's, that's my only sense is that I, I don't, I don't think that there's a way that we make this right, um, by making this decision moving forward, um, for the residents of Winchester. It's, it's a, um,
Well, I, I don't think Jay Cal, Jay Talman is gonna be kinder on this than Liz. I mean, from what I've heard from him, it's, you know, we do so at our peril. So that's just what, I've been in conversations with them about this, so.
Well, I, I, I really haven't. I mean, I, I, and I think that the board hasn't and I think that, um, a couple of things that he wrote initially, he kind of changed as he moved along. Um, so I, 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 I don't, and a lot, and a lot of things have, have, have changed since that time, but, um, it's, it, it's an unfortunate loss for our affordable housing stock here, um, to issue this, um, this RFP and this, this land will be, um, you know, uh, will, will never be recovered again by the town and, uh, it's, um, there, there was a home there for more than a generation. Um, somebody did live there, um, in our community. So um, it's, it's sad that, uh, you know, we're not, we're not even able to restore that when it's one of our top priorities as the board, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, uh, on John's motion, it's been seconded by Anthea. Michelle?
No.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mike?
No.
Passes three to, uh, onto the consent agenda.
Louis, approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I thought we voted the consent agenda.
We did not vote the consent agenda. We voted the motion, town, town meeting warrant consent.
Thank you, that one.
Is there a second?
I'll second on that then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes.
Louis, approve the supplemental consent agenda as posted for Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, a passage. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, WinCam, for staying with us. Have a good night.